Thank you. All right, so we are going to just remind you the public comment will occur during the public comment portion of the meeting and is done via raising your hand remotely or a person during public comment. Once acknowledged, state the name and words that it can be included in the minutes and please limit your time to three minutes. Public comment is governed by our policy, the E D H. So are there any additions or additions from the agenda that's over and it's done?
You might have to look at a discussion. I had to. It's after I. No, after I.
And I've already made my first error of the day. So we actually have to, before we open this meeting, we have to have a public hearing on the proposed donation from the Bern Foundation for seven thousand dollars towards the LHS FBLA. So I'd just like to open the public hearing for the donation. Are there any comments or questions about the donation? Future Business Leaders of America, I think it's on FBLA. That's for. For the Future Business Leaders of America. So we thank the Bern Foundation very much for their generous donation. So at this time, I will close the public hearing and then return to the regularly scheduled school board meeting. All right. Okay, so now it's time for public comment. Is there any public comment in the room? See none? There's still no one online? Okay, so no public comment online. We will return to public comment at the end of the meeting and open back up again should more people arrive. So we have that available. Okay. Correspondence? Is there any correspondence? Thank you, Mary. All right. And now we're going to the consent agenda. So we have on our agenda the motion to approve the public hearing minutes from March eighth, but there is some confusion about whether we have already done that. So we're actually just gonna hold off on the public hearing minutes from March eighth. We're going to table that for right now. We might have to come back to it. And then also, we need a motion to approve the public minutes from March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three.
Make a motion to approve the public minutes from March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three.
Motion by MJ, seconded by Stephen. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Next.
So I think under number seven A, I think we should just add the word April. So for reference for the first two weeks, not on April the forty-fifth, the twenty-fifth. The numbers are March or April. Oh, and then under item number eleven, the last sentence says the new superintendent will hopefully be here at the second meeting in May, which will be her last meeting. The new superintendent will take over the first meeting in June, but I don't think that that, I don't think she was going to take over the meeting in June. She just, I think it's the new superintendent will attend the meeting, but it won't be her last meeting. It will be Dr. Roberts' last meeting.
Right.
So it should be. I don't know why. It's.
Right, so Dr. Roberts will change that to think Dr. Roberts will be here at the second meeting in May, which will be her last meeting. The new superintendent will attend the first June meeting, which is traditionally the board retreat. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, that would be helpful. Yes, works for me. Thank you. Are there any other changes? Yes, Jessica?
Yes, just under item three, the election of officers. The abstain from both votes. And this has me.
Okay. We'll make that change. Thank you. Any other corrections? Okay, so we have a motion. All those in favor of approving the minutes as amended from the public minutes from March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, please raise your hand. Okay, unanimous. Thank you. All right, so we'll move on to nominations, renominations, resignations, and retirements. We have a big list. Typically, you do these by group, right? Mm-hmm. All right, so we need to, do we need to do them each individual year, like third contract, second contract? Yes? Okay. Okay.
There's no, there's no set way to do it, but usually we do continuing contract and third year.
Okay.
Can I just ask one question? I just was curious for any teachers on corrective actions? I just want some clarification. If we have any teachers on corrective action plans, they still get any step change and percent increase? If that.
I believe that's correct, yes.
Okay. And does the board ever get an update on, not necessarily who, do we ever get an update on if we do have?
That would be an internal personnel action. Actually, when these, when these are put together by my office, we receive a list from the principals, and that's what goes on this, on the sheet. So we're, in our office, we're not checking, we actually don't specifically don't know who's on a corrective action plan or didn't make it. So if they're on this list, then the principals deem them eligible to be teaching next year with a step.
But does the board ever get updated about any of that, like corrective action stuff? Do you know?
I would say they would, I mean, I would love to check if you want me to, but I would say no, because you have one employee and that's a superintendent. So if a staff member is not leaving up, that's their supervisor and superintendent's job to hold that to the fire, so.
Thanks. Any other questions about the nominations? Yeah, we're gonna make a motion for the first one. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to accept the twenty-three, twenty-four renomination sheet labeled continuing contract LEA.
Motion by MJ, seconded by Steve.
And Tim, these are anybody that have been here more than four years? Is that how I'm understanding? Or?
I believe it's starting their sixth year.
Okay.
Am I reading it right? We have some folks that are more than a one point oh FTE?
Correct, so one point oh was hundred and eighty-five days, seven, seven and a half hours a day, but guidance counselors, for example, nurses, some people work a few extra days, and that's when you'll see it's more than one point oh, so.
So if it says point zero eight, it's eight extra days?
If it says point.
Zero eight?
It's a point eight, I'm assuming.
No, one point zero eight.
Oh, one point oh eight. No, it's not, no, it's a percentage, so.
Oh, I see.
Point eight of, point oh eight of a hundred and eighty days.
Like the Ms. Born, she's working five extra days and that's a point oh three. I only happen to know that. I don't have them all memorized.
Very impressive. All right. Okay. All right, so we have a motion for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four renomination continuing contracts LEA. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous. Thank you. We need the next motion.
A motion for the twenty-three, twenty-four renomination for second contracts of the LEA.
Motion by MJ, seconded by Stephen. Any additional questions on any of these nominations? No? Okay, so all those in favor, you have a question? Yes.
So you, in New Hampshire, you get, in general, there's, it gets a little wonky if you've come from another district, but generally, your sixth contract is your, is continuing. But it used to be called tenure, and so the second contract would be a second-year teacher.
Any additional questions? All right, we need to vote on the twenty-two, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-four second contracts for the LEA. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous. Thank you.
Make a motion for the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-four renomination for the third contracts of the LEA.
Motion by MJ, seconded by Steve. We'll go straight to voting. All those in favor? Unanimous. Fourth.
Make a motion for the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-four renominations for the fourth contracts of LEA.
All those in favor? Okay, excellent, all right.
I'll make a motion for the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-four renomination of the fifth contracts of LEA.
Motion by MJ, seconded by Steve. Again, all those in favor?
And last but not least, I'll make a motion for the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-four renominations of the sixth contract, first continuing.
Motion by MJ, seconded by Stephen. All those in favor? And that is not the last one. Sorry. Last of the, last of the LEA. All right, got three more of these. Go ahead.
I'll make a nomination, sorry, I'll make a motion to accept the nominations of SAU for school year twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-four.
Motion by MJ, seconded by Stephen. These are a little bit different. Any other questions? Okay, these are just the SAU employees. All those in favor?
I will make a motion for, to accept the school administrators' renomination twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-four.
Motion by MJ, seconded by Stephen. All those in favor? Unanimous again. And last but not least.
I will make a motion to accept the nominations, resignations dated April twenty-six, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Motion by MJ, seconded by Stephen. Does anybody have any questions about these, which are just the current nominations or resignations? New hires, right? Go ahead.
So I have a question, hopefully, Tim, you can answer it. I see that the French teacher is gonna be a split position. Is this to replace, I know LMS had lost a French teacher this year, so is this how we're filling the position that we were down at LMS for French?
Correct. It's, it was split before, it's a little different split now. It's, it's the same FTEs, but it's mixed between the two schools, a little differently than it was in last year, but I was telling someone the other day, I have a set of mini heart attacks on some days, and so one heart attack, I'm like, we're not, we're not hiring new teachers, not in the budget, so this is, and then Ian and Colleen explained the math to me as far as how they're splitting the time, so it is a replacement at both schools, and it's just a different split. I think it was like sixty percent and forty percent, and now it's gonna be like, I think the other way around, sixty at the high school, forty at the middle or something, so.
So then will the middle school be fully staffed in French for next year with this addition?
Colleen.
Come to us, Colleen.
We're not intending, I don't think we're intending on losing any world language teachers is the point. I don't, is that correct? I don't.
Assuming no attrition from today forward.
I don't know. Hit it and see. It's just whether they can hear you on the thing, so if it's, there's a button. Thank you. How about now? All right, there we go. We, we are still hiring and interviewing for a full-time French, and then we'll have the part-time split between the high school and the middle school. So we're working on the full-time position, but it didn't change the budget in any way. Just for the long-term sub, we flip-flopped it so that we could use the teachers that we had in the district. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions about these? Just leave it on, it's okay. It can stay on, yeah, it's fine. Thank you. Oh, okay. Okay, thanks. Any other questions about this? All right, so we have a motion, all those in favor of accepting the nominations and resignations for April twenty-six, twenty-two, twenty-three. Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much. For you new board members, you'll, that last sheet is what you'll see on a regular basis, replacements. The other one, the other one is just a big once-a-year thing, so.
All right, so now it is time for our student report. Let's see if it's still on. No, it's turned off. Go ahead. I think you have to turn it on. On the bottom, very bottom.
Just one question.
Is that mic working over there? Let's see. It is, let's just send it over there.
Good evening. Um, yeah, so at Lebanon High School, it's been busy. Um, so we had our first track meet in a while, that it was really fun. A lot of people went, I raised in it, and that was fun. The boys got first place at a track meet, yeah, and the girls got second place, which was really good placing for us. We have had our class of twenty-two, twenty-four elections and our class of twenty-two, twenty-six elections, and all those new members will be inducted into student council in May, I think, and our class of twenty-five elections are, is still going on, so I'm hoping to win. Yeah. And then.
Prom is coming up?
Oh, yeah, prom is coming up. That's true. I forgot about that, 'cause I'm not going.
Right.
Everyone's really excited about that. I've seen a couple of people do prom posals in the halls, so that's fun. Some of my friends are going, which is nice for them. We had our Italy trip meeting the other day for the Italy trip next year. That was academic block in Ms. Backston's room, I believe. I looked, we had a home lacrosse game, which we lost by one point, which was, that's too bad. Our baseball team's doing pretty well. I think that's it.
Okay. That's good. Does anybody have any questions for John?
I think we also, we have one high school senior who just signed a B-one contract.
Oh, yeah. And a.
For Rhode Island, University of Rhode Island for rowing. So congratulations to her. All right, thank you. Okay.
What was this for?
Rowing, yeah, crew. Okay, we are going, actually, Tim, I'm gonna suggest one other change, and to everyone. I'm suggesting that we move under new business ten A, the early childhood facility with Mr. Mulholland, we move it up now and do our administrator updates later. Okay, so we're gonna move on to ten A, which is the, Sean Mulholland's gonna speak to us about the early childcare facility. You can sit or stand, whichever you prefer.
Well, I sit all day, so standing might be bad. I feel like I wanna sing karaoke, but you don't wanna. Some things I'm gonna, other things I'm just, nonetheless, actually, Mary attended the public community conversations meeting we had in seventeen, huge crowd.
Can you speak a little bit more into the mic? It's for the people out there, not for us.
Yep. So anyway, we had a community, community conversations meeting on that particular day. We had already met with providers four different times prior to that, and one specifically with Vermont providers. We've been working on this since August of two thousand twenty-one. I won't go through all the things, 'cause it took about an hour, obviously, you don't have that kind of time. Basically, what we're looking at is building a facility, and there's a lot of reasons why we're doing that, I'll kind of skip into that, I'm gonna leave questions, 'cause I'm guessing you probably have some. We're looking at building a facility on city property located up at the airport in the new industrial park that we just built. We're looking at the last lot, because that abuts the conservation property. We're looking at a, a type of playground that is an environmental playground, it's not traditional playground with monkey bars and things that we probably, most of us probably grew up with, I know I'm probably older than most of you, but it'll be with trees and plants, and it's a nature's type of playground, and we're gonna be able to use that conservation land as a classroom. So that's, that location's particularly valuable to us. It's also close to a lot of our big businesses that have employees that work there in our service district, where a lot of our service employees work on Route twelve A. And of course, we own it, which, the whole idea of the city being a partner in this is to reduce the cost for a provider who can come in and provide fifty-one percent of the childcare slots to low to moderate income folks. Also, we're looking at a, a teaching facility to be able to teach new childcare providers on the site. It'll be segregated from the, from the children, because you have to have that for people who are not licensed and haven't gone through a background check yet to be able to complete that, and there's a delay in getting folks in that process. We're also looking at feasibility of providing non-traditional hours on weekends and nights for shift workers. Certainly, I have city employees that work shifts, but all those factories and nurses have work shift, and very few providers, or almost no providers, provide that sort of care. We're going to require that the provider, in this case, it's the Boys and Girls Club, is the selected provider of, of Central New Hampshire, that they provide salaries that are competitive, livable, and also benefits that comply with that as well. So there'll be a number of requirements that are on them to do that. So the city will, the facility will be owned by the city, and then they provide, so it's like a landlord-tenant type of relationship. We will not charge the Boys and Girls Club anything to operate their program as long as they comply with our requirements that are in there. We're looking at two hundred children, which would meet the need of ten percent of the pre-COVID numbers. We suspect that number's actually higher now, because a lot of childcare centers have closed down. Others are only providing not the full amount of slots they had before, 'cause they don't have the staff in which to do that. Best-case scenario, it'll take three years to complete this project, so sometime twenty-six is the best-case scenario. I did a similar thing in the town of Allenstown, where I worked there, it took me a little years to do that, because a lot of this requires donations and grants. That's how we did it, the property taxpayers did not pay anything in the town of Allenstown to build that facility at that time. So I'm looking at the same model here, that this has to be grants, tax credits, and donations. Boys and Girls Club are now building a facility in Concord, they raised four point five million dollars in six months, they have a pretty robust fundraising operation, and I've been involved with that, with them before. They have twenty-eight facilities across the state presently. What else can I tell you? With this, the short brief of this, we actually looked at this building and the environmental and sustainability provisions you built into this building as an example of what we want in our new facility, 'cause you have a lot of those, you're dealing with your rainwater, you're collecting that, reusing it on-site, you've got a lot of innovative things that are being done here that we want to do in this building as well to meet the city's sustainability objectives. Again, we use this building as an example for that. Yeah, what else can I answer for you? I mean, again, this, we had a presentation that lasted about an hour, you don't have that kind of time right now. Five minutes.
If you're, I'm delighted that you're here, thank you very much for coming, and thank you for the sort of introduction to the project and, and all your work on it. So I think the, the questions that I have about the program and the direction that it's headed mostly just revolve around, to what extent are you and your team thinking about kind of quality versus quantity of early childhood education? You know, slots are very important, but also making sure that the program that you're, that is going to be put together sort of essentially on the city's behalf is gonna be a really high-quality program rather than just a program. And I was curious about the extent to which you may or may not have engaged with the early childhood educators who are part of our school district, who are doing really amazing work at the preschool program at the Mount Lebanon School, and whether you've spoken with them about their, with their experience with the city and the need, and are sort of factoring any of that into the planning? And I, I think I'm curious about what coordination there's been between sort of existing city resources for early childhood education and sort of the desire to build, the wonderful desire to build more.
So traditionally, municipalities aren't involved in childcare, traditionally, and very few in this state are, and there are some examples here and there, so we're, and to a certain degree, and not in territory, other than the town of Allenstown where I worked before, where municipalities don't do this sort of work. The town of Barrington reached out to us to see what we were doing, 'cause they wanted to, they wanted to do something similar to what we're doing. There's a lot of pieces to this that we've been involved in since two thousand twenty-one. The city committed a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars of ARPA funds for a vital communities initiative, and there are other matching funds that went with that, to be able to deal with the whole range of childcare issues, from retention and recruitment of staff, to advocacy, to facilities and programs and models, which is the group, working group that I was part of and co-chair with. We had invited, we, when we created our groups, we invited the school district to participate, and we received, it was an interim principal at the time, she's probably a principal now. Yeah. So obviously, she was dealing with her, probably her regular full-time job and dealing with that task too, and wasn't able to participate with us. Right, and, and we, that's, we get that, right? I mean, the priority is, there's a reason why we're one of the top ten school districts in the state, 'cause we're focusing on what we really need to do, or you're focusing on what you need to do for, so that's not a complaint by any means. The superintendent is heavily involved, as you probably know, in what we're doing now. I don't do the programming piece, it's not, it's not my area of expertise. The Boys and Girls Club, the ECA, ECEA folks that we've been working with very closely, they're the folks that are, 'cause I don't know how to, I don't know how to do that, right? That's not my area of expertise, so I don't pretend to determine what the programming should be. There's, the program they're going to use, is it Ryukku? I forget the, the name, the terminology. It's not the Immersion Montessori version of that, but it starts with an R. That's the sort of model that they're gonna be replicating here. One of the things that we were impressed with when we did the RFI is the Immersion Montessori School, they, they were one of the proposers to, to do that with us. They had a pretty impressive program with the ethnic foods that they are, are cooking on-site, and also the foreign languages that they're doing, which is pretty neat. As you know, that's the best time to teach somebody a foreign language, is when they're starting to develop their language skills in the first place. So that, we were pretty impressed with that, and we talked to the Boys and Girls Club and said, we'd really like to take a look at that here. But their programs are not really designed for that type of effort. They're really designed to provide after-school programming, care for the after-school program, and some are more of the basic-type items, that there's an accreditation standard that they follow, N-E-A-Y-C, something like that. Yeah, you probably know more about it than I do. That's the model that they follow, and our goal was to try to get our facility accredited. It takes a while to do that, it takes a couple of years, my understanding is, to do that. I don't know if that answers your question. One of the things we.
Not really. I, I think mostly what I'm, what I'm curious about is, I mean, that's, that's all wonderful to hear, it sounds like a lot of thought is going into it, and that's great. I think, you know, you sort of alluded to the fact that municipalities are not often sort of doing this kind of thing, I think you're sort of seeing a lot of interest in that, and it just strikes me that we're in a sort of unique moment, because the municipality is doing that in this case, and the municipality does also provide educational services through the school board and the school district, and so there is actually a lot of expertise in the city already on this, essentially, the city's payroll, and so it, it feels like it would be a shame to miss out on that, and to miss out on some really deep knowledge about the needs specifically of Lebanon, and the needs of Lebanon families, and potentially how an existing program, you know, I, I don't know, it's not my, I am not the expert in this at all, we actually have those, those folks here, and I'm really excited to hear from them, but I think we, it does seem like we're in kind of a unique moment, and, you know, maybe there's ways that we can sort of think about working together a little bit more. I don't know what that would look like. I am on the city and school board task force, which I'm really excited to have our meeting at the end of next month, but it just, it, it seems like we've got some, some interesting years ahead of us, and we have some really excellent folks on that team, and feels like, it sounds like there was, you know, some attempts to connect in the past, and maybe we can revive those if that feels appropriate to folks, I don't know, but I'm excited that everybody's in the room today.
Boys and Girls Club is, in, in the Allenstown center, there's a very, very close relationship with the schools, because they provided an after-school program, and there's the Power Hour, homework assignment project, and there's a whole bunch of things that they do that have direct relationship with the school. When we were building one, we were eliminating the old buildings and building the new ones, the school let us run the programs there in the school, very close cooperation with human services and the police department in terms of referrals, and the police association paid for some of those kids to go that couldn't afford, so there was a very tight relationship that I would like to replicate here. We don't really have that here, we have the CCBA, which is a little bit different, it isn't what it used to be, so I see those relationships growing with that. When we looked at this model in the first place. When we looked at this model in the first place, there was a school district in Nebraska that actually took this on themselves. They built on their own property. They brought portable classrooms, and they paid the childcare staff, regular teachers' wages to do that, and they provided childcare for the community. Their own staff sent their kids there, but they provided it to the community. That was a, I thought was a pretty impressive example of that because you're, I don't know anything about running education, that's what new folks do. And that model, I thought, was pretty interesting for us to try to explore further as we go along. But here we are with the relationship that we do have with Boys and Girls Club, but there's a lot of opportunity for touchpoints and working closely together to make that even stronger.
Yeah, they've got, I think that, you know, part of the reason that it came to my mind was that there are significant limitations on what the program at the Mount Lebanon School can do because of space.
Right.
And, you know, the, given that there's sort of city effort going into creating more space for early childhood education, that felt like a conversation that, that would be a really interesting one. So I'm really excited that you're here, and thank you very much, and excited to see what happens going forward.
Yeah, and I still think, even though we've made, we've gone a long way, that doesn't mean that this relationship could not be different. Sometimes it's easier for the city to do things, to build a facility. That doesn't mean that that, in the future, that facility could not be turned over to the school district. There's a lot of touchpoints, and I would like to see our relationship a lot stronger. We have, I think we have a good relationship with the school district. In some places, it's pretty bad between school district and city. I think ours is pretty good, but there's a lot more strengthening that could occur to do that. And I'm very, very much interested in exploring other possibilities.
Thank you.
Because really, that is your realm, and I think you do a much better job than we put, again, I'm not going to be doing that because I don't know how to run those programs. That's why we're partnering with somebody else to do it. Partnering with the school district would have been even better to do this.
Sorry, Mary and then MJ.
Maybe you can give the principal of Mount Lebanon's name to Chris. Isn't he the one who is in charge of the programs?
He, he does this with every school district he's in. He'll be reaching out to them. He's already reached out to the superintendent. They've already, we've already had several conversations with the superintendent. She was involved in the review process for selecting the Boys and Girls Club, and she's been actively involved in that whole piece. And I haven't met the new superintendent, but she's going to be drinking from a fire hose as soon as she gets in here, so I'm going to give her some room before, because all of my city staff want to meet with her about all the different touchpoints and issues that we have.
Yeah.
We need to give her some breathing room before we come knock on our door.
But Katie's here, and Katie is whom I'm thinking you should attach.
Yes.
MJ.
So can you clarify, is the intent of this new facility to help the Lebanon economy and therefore the businesses that pull from a, or two-state catchment area, or is it going to be exclusively to help Lebanon residents? So are children going to be only admitted that are children of Lebanon residents, or are you trying to help like the DHMC and even the school system by taking children, knowing that the students actually go to school in Vermont or New Hampshire?
Yeah, so the approach is, I make it very clear about this, is they'll take whoever signs up. It's not limited to the city of Lebanon residents at all. Most of our, we have sixteen thousand people a day that come into the city to work in this city. This is to, it's multi-part. It's to deal with the fact that we have a huge, this is a crisis point, childcare, is housing and then childcare, that that's what limits our workforce. There are two million American women who are not able to go back to work because they don't have childcare. They either can't afford it, they can't find it. That's incredibly unfair because when you think about it, if you're in your twenties, you have a child, and you have to wait till they get to age twelve, when they could potentially could be on their own, you've lost twenty, twelve years of your career. Your peers that you were sitting beside have moved up, your ability to earn income has now been reduced significantly, and your ability to retire someday has now been reduced significantly. That's incredibly unfair. So there's, there's an equity issue there. I have staff that can't find childcare, so I'm losing trained, highly qualified, highly qualified people that I cannot bring back into my workforce. That really hurts us. It costs us a lot of money to do that. We've taken our own steps. We're providing a five thousand dollar childcare FSA, the maximum you can provide, so that any employee that has children can go and do that. We are now, we have twelve weeks of paid FMLA that we provide, not FMLA, parental leave, whether the father or the mother, to be able to go out and take care of your child. We just built a, the breastfeeding room in our, in our city hall. We just finished that the other day. So we have women that can actually come in and be able to do that, pump so they can provide that need. So we're doing all the things that I can do with the resources I have, but this is to address the community, and it is to provide, and Boys and Girls Club does not discriminate. In the town of Allenstown, forty, at one point, forty-six percent of the kids are from Allenstown, the rest are from Huxit and Pembroke and Epsom. So it does not matter, and that's the way we've looked at it. There will not be designated spots for city staff, it will not do that. They'll have to compete like everybody else for those slots, so it's wide open. We, we have to look at ourselves as a region. We are, we are the hub of a regional economy, and we have to look at it that way. When you start to build those silos, I don't think you see anybody at the end of the day. So we'll probably have kids from Vermont, and we'll definitely have kids from different communities in New Hampshire that'll be going there.
Jessica. I think, again, I commend you for kind of thinking in this direction and being so proactive. And I think one issue that I've seen, I'm someone who has young children, who has been through different daycare and different care elements recently, and it's, it is incredibly challenging. One piece that I would call out is, and I know this isn't your, sort of, you know, specifically your task in front of you, but I think as the person who's sort of heading this up, one piece that I would call out for you is, is the difference between simply providing care and providing quality care that the city of Lebanon can be really proud of, and the difference between, you know, I think the programs that you're planning to implement or that the, will be implemented are from birth to age five, I think?
No, that's one group. There's a hundred, a hundred and forty slots will be zero to age five, well, infant to age five.
Right.
And then the other sixty slots are going to be the after-school program.
Sure. But the, a pretty good chunk will be the-
Up to age twelve.
Up to age five, you said a hundred and forty slots for up to age five.
And there's a heavy emphasis on infant care because there's a huge shortage of that.
Yes, yeah.
And then from the age six to twelve, that's the after-school program.
Yeah. So I think, again, the needs of children, the needs of infants are very different from the needs of two-year-olds, are very different from the needs of four- and five-year-olds. The educational needs are really different. The interventions that start to happen for kids who have special needs start to increase, start to kind of become more apparent at the age of around two and three, those screenings happen. And so I would really encourage you and your team to be thinking really about creating a really high-quality program that is, and building a structure that is going to be able to provide space for high-quality programming. And I'm really excited that you're at that, that you're sort of in the early stages of it, so that it seems like it's still the moment when those conversations can be had. You know, you haven't poured any cement yet. And I, I think that everything that, that I've learned in the last couple of years has just indicated that you just want to be really careful about making sure that we're not just building slots, we're building really high-quality care for the kids in our region and the families in our region. So I, yeah, and I think that we've got a really great team that's able to weigh in on that, and I would just encourage, encourage collaboration there.
Yeah, there's this, we use this word, this term childcare, that is like babysitting. The reality is early childhood education, which is what they actually provide. So just a couple of things on that. One, we have two more community conversations coming up. When we get the conceptual, when we have something to actually look at a building structure, probably late July into August, you're certainly welcome to attend, or we could come back here and make a presentation just to the school board, and they can answer. I want to have Chris bring his people, and they talk about what the programming and the curriculum piece of that is, if that's what you would like to do. And we could also bring that up with your staff, so they could take a look at it, and they could advise you on that, or we could make a presentation to you if you would like, if that's helpful to you.
I think we'll, we'll talk about it and, yeah, sorry, we'll talk about that and get back to you because I don't know, but I think that's a good idea, and thank you for offering that, I appreciate it. Wendy, you were asked a question.
So is there any reason not to sort of qualify that you either have to live in or work in Lebanon?
Yeah, we don't, we don't discriminate against anybody. And either if you're working in here today, or you're not working there tomorrow, what happens then? Does that mean your children are tossed out of the facility? You could be working in, in one of the factories today, and all of a sudden you get a job in Vermont, and you live in, you know, you're from Vermont, you live in Norwich, and you are, you're working at Nova Nordus, which is right around the corner, and all of a sudden you leave for employment, or you're working at home.
Well, right, I mean, I, I would think that, anyway, I would, given that it's a, like a Lebanon facility, it would seem to be that if we're trying to support our community in the ways that you're indicating are the reasons why you want this facility, that at least the initial in would be that you have to work in or live in. I mean, and that still is a broad region of people that has access to, but it would seem like we would want to start with that group of people first, and then if we're not filling our spots, then, or you're not filling the spots, or that, then you open it up beyond that, but.
It, it tends to naturally gravitate to people who live here or work here anyway. That's what the, how the numbers generally work out in all of their facilities across the state and across the country for that matter, because it's, we're looking at their on-the-shelf programming model that comes in to do that. So I think you're going to find that most of the people are going to be from here anyway.
I would just wonder if, you know, the talks about the school districts being part of this, I believe our daycare preschool program, you do have to be a lib resident, right? So would that complicate that nondiscrimination if the school board takes part of that? I don't know.
Well, let's say the school board took over the building. The city goes and, and gets the funds, builds the building. A year or two from now, the school board decides it wants to operate that, and we turn the property over to the school district to do that. Then you would be running your programs the way you want.
So that would just be that? Yeah, I understand why, you know, Big Brothers, Big Sisters or whatever would not want-
Boys and Girls Club, yeah.
Yeah, Boys and Girls Club. Sorry, mixed them up. I understand why they wouldn't want to have that only lib people, because it's a much bigger agency or, or group, right? So.
And that's the case wherever they all-
I think that'd be something to think about.
City Concord, they've got two facilities there, and now they're building a new one.
Yeah, yeah. I just think that's, that, that would be a question to think about of if the Lebanon School District does decide to take a big piece in it, does that silo who you guys can take in, and is that something that the facility wants to consider potentially happening?
And that's a, I mean, that's a good question.
Just, yeah, just putting it out there.
All right. Any other questions for Sean?
Just going to ask, you mentioned it, it'll be three years, and I'm just curious what's sort of the longest portion of that, what takes, just putting the whole package together, building, or what's that?
Yeah, and then we have to go and seek the donations part, which takes time. So right now, we're, we're developing the conceptual concepts, the programming space. I could send you this picture, if you want to take a look at it. It'll take us between now and December for the council to approve the capital project. We've already got one grant application for three million dollars, and we're looking at the timelines for the others. The county has ARPA funds, they're going to provide it for fifty thousand for each community. There'll be, there'll be a lot of small little grants that'll go towards this. We're already applying for that one. Tax credits have a timeline, and so don't the Community Development Block grants, they have a timeline. And then once we get that conceptual package, which will probably be July or September, we will actually go and start the process of seeking donations from corporate entities, not just within the city, but from externally as well. So that, that's what, that'll take that time. If that gets approved by the council, which I presume it will in December, then we go to final design, which will take until the spring, summer of two thousand twenty-four. And then we will go out to bid in the fall of two thousand twenty-four, award those bids, construction company. They may start in the wintertime, they may start in the spring of twenty-five. It's about an eighteen-month construction period on average, so that puts us into late twenty-six before, best-case scenario, if everything lines up. It took me eleven years on the other facility, and I'm hoping to do better than that with this one, but you just, then things happen, you know? Now, there's a lot of grant money out there, but that's going to disappear. So now is the time to try to grab as much of that as possible before it goes away.
Okay. Thank you so much for coming in, we appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mysterious voice from the back of the room. This microphone's batteries are dying, so just please use that one if you're asked to speak.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Back on the agenda. Okay, so we're back on the agenda. We're going to the SAU leadership team update, the business administrator update, and Tim.
All right, Lil, were we going to have the-
Well, so that's what I was just looking at, and I was trying to decide, and I hadn't really decided.
That's probably fine, Tess. I don't think I have any objects.
Yeah, okay. So Katie, you're here.
I thought you were going to make her wait.
No, I think-
I'm about ready to say, I have to wait, I have to be at every meeting, she can wait an hour.
No. Okay, so, since you're here, we're going to go ahead and move to, we'll move up item ten B ahead. Yeah, you can sit, that's fine. So introduce yourselves, and we're ready to hear from you.
Well, welcome. Welcome, new board members. I'm Katie Roach, I'm the principal at Mount Lebanon School.
I'm Elizabeth Bailey, assistant principal and preschool coordinator.
And I want to, can you guys hear me? Well, okay. I want to first say Sean did invite me to the meetings last year. I was a little busy doing multiple things, and they were during the day, and it was, it was really, it was not something I could sustain because it was a time commitment. I just didn't have any extra time. So, just FYI. So he was really open with that. I, I think there were some questions brought up about preschool, and I think it's important that the school board know that our early childhood program is not a child, it's not a daycare center. There is a huge daycare set, crisis. We see it at our own school with teachers looking for childcare. I was just talking, calling some other, some childcare centers to try to support some of our staff members to even find something for where their kids could go. So it is a crisis, and I really commend the city for doing something. Jessica, I totally agree, high quality is great if we can get high-quality childcare. But I, I want you guys to under, I just, there were some questions brought up about what we do and our, and our preschool program, and it is an early childhood program, and every district has an early childhood program because you have to buy the state through New Hampshire DOE. And it doesn't have to necessarily be a program, but school districts are responsible for taking over services for kids. Once they turn, you really start the process when they're two and a half, and so once they're two and a half, you start transition meetings, you start working with them, and if a student qualifies for special education, you have to have an IP in place by their third birthday, which is why we start so far in advance. Lebanon is amazing in that we have an early childhood program. I worked in a different district before here. You, it, there's no requirement to have one, to have a program. Districts don't have to have like a, classes, they could, it's a continuum of services. You could provide community-based preschools or child, or early childhood programming for kids. You could provide home-based services if you needed to, you could provide, you can go into childcare and provide services, but that, we do do that sometimes, and that's tricky. So, but Lebanon has chosen to have the programs in their school district, which is great because it allows us to oversee all the programming, and that's kind of the problem when you work with community-based preschools or childcare centers and you're, I don't want to say you're outplacing your kids, but so if you're in a different district and you have a student that is eligible for special education services, you might place them in a different, in a childcare center within your district so you can provide transportation, and you don't oversee their curriculum. So when you have it in your own school, under your own teachers, you're hiring, you know the best teachers that you can that are also duly certified in special education and early childhood, and then you can kind of, you do oversee their curriculum. You owe, you know, our teachers are observed just like all our preschool teachers, everyone else, they have a license like everyone else does. So that's a huge benefit, and I want to commend Lebanon in the fact that they do have, we have an, I'm, I'm really proud of our preschool program, our early childhood program. We do an amazing job with families and students, and we have been able to provide a fifty-fifty ratio. We, we did take a year during COVID where we just provided an early childhood special ed, but we've, we tried really hard to keep a fifty-fifty ratio, and that is what, a fifty-fifty, you're probably like, what's a fifty-fifty ratio? A fifty-fifty ratio, thanks, Elizabeth, is fifty percent of students that are identified with some kind of special need and then fifty percent that are, do not have a special need. And we do that so we have some good peer models for kids. So we run two different programs. We run a three-year-old and a four-year-old program, and we, you know, as you guys know, we put them all at Mount Libs, so we have two classrooms that have identical programs.[1767.83] This year, they've had every year, next year might look a little different. And I think we spoke about it at our last board meeting. Do we see a difference arise in need? And yes, we do. And because of that, Elizabeth is, and the preschool team have worked really hard to try to figure out how to meet all the kids' needs that have come in because we do have a, a number of more needs than we've had coming in next year than we've had in the past. So just trying to be able to meet them all, all the needs within our own program that, again, we're very appreciative of. So, so the things that kids get when, besides the fact that they get our own, they, we oversee their program, they also understand school routine because it's within the school. They take, not all the kids take the school bus because you have to be eligible for special education to be able to get transportation. Little bit of a barrier, but it's, it is what it is. So we don't provide transportation for all the kids. We also provide, it's free for kids that are identified with special needs, but kids that are not identified with special needs do pay. But it's on a sliding scale, sliding fee scale. So it's based on an application of free and reduced lunch. Another thing that the district's done that you guys should be very proud of, and I'm super proud of it, is starting like four years ago, was it, Tim? Three year, four years ago, we started. You're like, what did, what did, what did you do, Katie? We started an at-risk, we, we asked for, to have two slots in each of the three-year-old programs and two slots in each of the four-year-old programs for at-risk students. So students that might not be identified with special needs yet, or maybe won't, but we know that they need to have an early childhood programming. And so there's no tuition for them, and there's no, and that we do provide transportation because that's, again, I think, a barrier for a lot of families. If they don't have a car, they can't get to school. So we try to help with that. So, and that's a really thoughtful conversation that Elizabeth has with her team to determine those slots. And we kind of go through that. So you guys have asked if there are wait lists for our preschool program. There always are wait lists. One barrier is we are an early childhood preschool program, so we are not daycare. We are not full-time. We, we have, our three-year-old program is from 8:45 to 10:45, four days a week. So a lot of families can't do that. And we don't provide transportation unless you have a special need. So it's not like we can transport them back to a daycare setting. And then our four-year-old program runs four afternoons a week from 11:30 to 2:30. So for working parents, that is a, that's a barrier because we're not a full-day program. So we, that's something we need to, that, that's why I think we would have more of a wait list because when people realize that we have a preschool, we get a lot of calls, a ton of calls, for our preschool program. And then as soon as we say the hours, they're like, oh, that's not going to work for us. So, and then when we say we can't, the fee, or we can't provide transportation, then they're like, oh, that's really not going to work for us. So those are some of the things. They're not, it's, it's not a daycare. It is, it's like a preschool program. It is a preschool program. It's a great one. Okay, so, but this year, we do have five kids in the three-year-old program that we have a wait list for and six students in the four-year-old program because we are a capacity. In capacity, there's the ratio. And so in the three-year-olds, we try to keep a six identified, six typical. So we have two classrooms that have 12 kids in them. And then in our four-year-old program, we have two classrooms that have up to 14 kids in them. And we, we do keep slots for seven identified because you need to keep it. It's like a state requirement. It's part of our license, or that's probably not the right word, but maybe it's the right word. So that's how that works. So it's all approved by the DOE. Our whole, all our programs are approved by the DOE, yes.
Before we get too far into, can I ask for clarification on the wait list? So is the wait list also inclusive of kids that are identified? So you're having, so if you're identified, you automatically get in and there is no wait list?
Yes. You're, if they're, you're, well, so you're not provided necessar, so also because, so there's a caveat to that, MJ. So it depends on sometimes, and every student, all of the students that are identified with special needs don't necessarily, it's not a given that you have three days of preschool programming. It's all based on student need. And when we get really full, we often look, we try to be really creative with like, okay, maybe we can get you your services and some programming two days a week. Maybe we can do one day a week. Maybe we can, maybe they just want services, and then they bring students in for services. Or, so it's, it's always, it is not, it's not a very black or white. It's a very gray area that we try to meet students where they are and work with families to make sure that we get needs met, yes.
And, and just as a question about that, do you, the, the sort of creativity and the sort of like juggling that it sounds like you guys are doing?
Yeah, a lot of juggle.
Do you feel like that's because you feel like that's the best way to provide the services to the students and the families?
Do I, I feel like we are trying to meet the students' needs where they are the best we can with the services within, I guess.
I'm sorry, to clarify, my question is, are, are you limited by, like, to what extent are the assets available to you sufficient to meet the need versus if there was more space, if there were more resources? Do you feel like you could meet needs that, like establish needs in a better way? Are, is the juggling?
Yes, yes.
A great thing? Or is it a significant difficulty that you are laboring under?
It's, it's not a great difficulty. It's a challenge because obviously we know that, we know that children benefit from early childhood education. We know that. We know that, we, we know we provide great programming. We also know that we do have, so I guess it's a limit. We have two early childhood special educators, and we have two rooms, and that's all we can do. So we try, so I guess that's a kind of a limitation because if, but do we have, could we have more kids in our program for a longer period of time? Yes, I, I, I mean, of course, you can, I mean, I would hope, I would hope so. Would hope it would help more. But we also do have, we are meeting the kids' needs, which I think is really important.
And there's other preschool opportunities outside of the school district that can be, but it costs money?
It costs, there are preschool programs that a lot of kids, a lot of families choose to use. And, and they're for their kids. And then we get referrals sometimes for those, for other families, for kids that are, might be identified. And because of child find, of course, we do, I think we counted it. We did over, the preschool team did over 50, in the last 12 months, over 50 screenings or, and then that it turned into an evaluation that, then I believe we looked at it, 32? Was it 32 were identified? That's a lot. It's a, it's a, it's a huge increase from what we've had in years past. We used to have about 25, 30 maybe referrals.
So how many kids in Lebanon are identified and not in our preschool program?
Identified and not, that live in Lebanon and identified and not in our preschool program? We do have a few students that choose to come in for services because their childcare might be in a different town than our town is than Lebanon, and we don't transport to different towns. They would have to be at a childcare center in Lebanon for transportation. And I don't know of any that are, Elizabeth can talk about that right now.
I'd have to sit down, and it's hard for me to just think without writing in names. But I think a component of this is that we have to go with the third birthday. So if a child turns three in February, where now that has child has now become our responsibility, but our slots for the year were filled the previous spring. And so that classroom is pretty full. Not only is it full with children, it's full with children that are older than that three-year-old. So the development is different. So now that child isn't necessarily within our program, but is slated for the following fall if their parents want to participate. We do have parents that really are confident in their preschool or daycare and don't want to participate. We have families that are homeschooling, and they just want services to be provided. But I can get those numbers to you. I, I don't know offhand right now, but.
I would be more curious, I guess, just generally how many and why they don't choose to be in our?
It's rare for a family not to choose. But for example, we had a child in our three-year-old program this whole year who is not identified with a need for special edu, for special education, but because of childcare needs for his family, he is being taken out so that he can have something that's more, that's better for his family. And, and that's something that we deal with all the time. We also have children that need to be referred because of pathways. They may qualify, and then the family is moving. So now we've done the whole process. We've written the IEP. We even have serviced them for a few months in the spring, and they're going off to Virginia. So things do change, and it's a very fluid process. I think that what Jessica mentioned about the strain and the juggle, I love that term. I think that's appropriate for preschool, is it's become so normal for us. I don't know if I can say, what's, this is what we do. And that, that is really difficult. And it's, and Katie and I met before this meeting to discuss how to explain this. And it's not easy to explain. You kind of have to live it to know it. But the fact that you're willing to hear us is a huge step forward. We've never, I don't think, sat, and I haven't, sat before you and talked about our preschool program. A thing that we discussed this year is that the preschool is almost like its own little school. And that, for me, having been, this is my ninth year in the district, I never thought of it that way. I love Mount Lebanon, maybe that's why, I just want to be Mount Lab. But really, it is its own identity in itself. And so that, and it has its different rules than school age. So that also is something different. I love the idea of working with childcare's in the, in the city. We've done some work like that, and it's been something that my team is interested in doing. The thing that we're running into is that childcare's have students that have behaviors that are hard to deal with, but not necessarily academic needs right now. It's hard to say academics at three and four, but those behaviors can really impact them. And so that's why our expertise could be really useful in our teachers. I have my own children. Some of the staff members Katie was talking about was me for next year and another really beloved staff member. And if I could send my children to our preschool, I would because our teachers are incredible and, and they're really, really dedicated too.
Mary, did you have, I want to say real quick about that too, Jessica. It's, it's a juggle here, and I think Elizabeth's right. We've done it for so long. I did it in a different district for seven years, and we didn't have our own preschool. And it was a juggle there too, because there's only, preschool programs only have certain amount of kids that can be in the program without it being overfull. And it just, it is, it's a, it's, it's just always part of that, that trying to meet all the kids' needs.
Mary, did you have, sorry, did you have a question?
At the presentation the other night, he didn't mention this, but there was a panel that he had with him online of like the people who developed the building, and they showed pictures, and they talked about the sizes of the classrooms and being developed for different age groups, which I thought was really cool. And then I thought of Mount Lebanon, how small the room is and how many kids you have. And they talked about the square footage that they're prepared to make the building so that it is, and the windows are lower so the little kids can see out into the woods. And they planned it, they planned it, it looks really nice. And, and Chris, the guy from the Boys and Girls Club, he was talking about wanting to have the program, early childhood program, not just childcare, but early childhood program, be certified by the, I never get those initials.
By the DOE?
Yes, yeah.
That's a big, yeah.
And, and about, and, and the training for these people too, having those, so.
I think something too, when you look at going to a community-based or so say, whatever happens with the city, which I think will be a while, is that when you have, first of all, it's a huge funding cost for districts. And second of all, you have to think, a lot of our students require physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech-language therapy. And when you have all those service providers and you're going to a different center, you are paying for them to go, so you're losing time. So the beauty of having it within your own building is that we have a speech pathologist on site. Our, the district has an OT, the district has a PT, so they, you're not, and they can work with other kids, and you're not losing that transition, you know, the transition time or transportation of them going around. And I, I remember that. It's a long, that, I did that for a long time as an early childhood educator. And I would go around from all different preschools and childcare programs around the Upper Valley. So anyways.
Does your program have grants that you can write for?
For what, for more space, for more teachers?
No, for, just for your program.
I don't, we have, we do have IDEA grant money that we have that helps support the preschool program, yes.
I don't, I don't know if we need, we have a need for grants for the day-to-day things that we've been working with. We're, we're blessed in Lebanon to thank you for giving us what we need. I think some of the things that Jessica mentioned and Katie mentioned, space, the barriers that we see for families, like having children that aren't identified still have to pay is something that is hard. Unfortunately, our state and country don't have universal preschool, and that is something that is a bigger thing. But I don't think a need for money has been an issue so much.
It's, it's under, it's under our budget. It's under, we budget for our preschool program every year. We go, we sit, and we figure out what we need, and I meet with the teachers. We've been pretty successful at that, at meeting not exceeding our, the money that we've, have budgeted for it. We're pretty careful. I mean, we also have everything we need. If you come to our program, which I invite all of you guys to spend a day, it's amazing the, the relationships the kids have, the staffing. We're probably going to be asking for extra supports for a pair of sports, but you know, Tim? So, so I think, I, I just, I think it is a great program. I recommend anyone that wants to come. And we, we, we do a great job supporting the, the kids in Lebanon that have special needs. They do, we do transition meetings when they go either to Hanover Street or at Mount Lab. And it's, we try really, really hard to work with families. And it is really, from doing this for a long time, it is also, one of the key things that I think we should all realize is that we build strong relationships with families. And it is a trust. They trust us, and then they trust the schools. And it helps, I think, with relationships as kids move forward because they already have that relational trust. And that's a really, when you have a child that has special needs, that's really hard to start that, you know, that process. And it's real, it's important that you have people that care and are educated and want to work with you to kind of move through that process of kids. And I, it's just, it's.
So when Sawyer was in the preschool program, it was that they had the two. And so do you, how do you find the students who transition from Mount Lab to Hanover Street? Like, what is their transition like versus the ones that stay at Mount Lab?
You want to talk about it?
Sure. I, I think it's a great question. Our first year that we did that, we had Jenna Van Stelton, who was the teacher at Hanover Street, have all the students from Hanover Street and the ones that were repeating in the four-year-old program and then incoming threes. And then we soon found out that didn't really work. Like, we should, we should split it up. She's in our Mount Lab building. She should know the children that will be at Mount Lab and kindergarten and beyond too. And what we found is, and this is really the case with all of our families, there's a bond there for the children. And so what happens is those children that leave Mount Lebanon, the physical building, and go to Hanover Street as a unit, stay together. And I know this for a fact because a dear friend of mine has a kindergartner who went to preschool with us last year. And she told me about a thing at recess where someone bumped into him and two children that are his best, best, best friends from preschool, you know, you know, were like, you can't do that to him! And they totally rallied, and they are just bonded. And so to go into kindergarten bonded like that is amazing. And sure, it does happen for our Mount Lab kids, kids that are in our preschool and just go down the hall. But to go to a completely different building, kindergarten's scary, a new building is scary. They have that, even if they don't get to stay in that same space. So I don't think it's been a bad thing at all.
And we also do transition meetings, just like we transition kids up to the middle school. We do do transition meetings for students that are going to Hanover Street if they have, if they're on an IEP and/or if they're at risk. And we need to have some conversations. We've invited the assistant principal over. We've invited teacher, case managers over if they have time to come over. We have invited kindergarten teachers, but it's to meetings. Just, you have to have different people at different meetings. So we've invited them. They usually don't know what the class placement, who the teacher would be, similar to Mount Lab. You don't necessarily know who your teacher is going to be. But we try to make sure, and we do let the Hanover Street families know to go to the kindergarten screening over there so they can build a, a relationship. Or they, the teachers can get to know them too.
Jessica?
So two things that I want to comment on. One is, I'm, I'm curious about the cost of, you, you mentioned that some students who maybe choose not to participate in the Lebanon program because of family needs or, you know, that they need to stay in their current daycare, whatever, but they're eligible for services from Lebanon, that your team is, you know, potentially either like traveling to their daycare or their home or their. and um, sort of resources are spent to kind of trekking around to service kids sort of all over the city?
I'm going to tell you, we don't do that a lot right now. We have, we've managed to get them in our building, um, which has been great. Either transportation, uh, the, for, I mean, the transportation will sometimes go pick kids up from childcare centers and bring them in to, to us, which is great. That's a hardship on transportation. But I don't think it's, um, I don't think it's, it's cost prohibitive because they haven't told us they can't do it yet, ever. Um, so, and the, if a student goes to childcare in a different city because it's more convenient or town, because it's more convenient for their family's work, they can bring their kid in for their, their child in for therapies, but they, we are not responsible to provide transportation for them. So, and as far as services right now, um, we have a child that is not able to attend and we provide remote services because that's what the family needs to have been because of reasons of that.
Sure. Um, I think, and I guess the, the sort of, it's a little bit related, but the, the piece that I want to comment on is that as a parent who does participate in your program and is, you know, um, I think there's an incredible amount of gratitude towards the, the program and the people who are administering it and, and there is that real close connection with the program. I want to separate that a little bit from what I might say if I was asked about, is this an optimal program for um, those, those things perhaps being a little bit distinct in terms of, is two hours, four days a week great for my family? Um, or the other families that I talk to in the program, is that sort of, um, how well does that work for those families who might be incredibly grateful for um, the team, but also dealing with some difficulty, you know, sort of behind the scenes. I, I think that that's um, not an uncommon truth. And so I think that like it's, it to me feels important to recognize um, the incredible work that you guys are doing and how well I think the, the, the district has designed a program that kind of meets the requirements while also recognizing perhaps a gap between what we have and what we might ideally have, or even a little bit more ideally have. Um, and so I think that like I, that's a tricky conversation to have. But I think that if, I wonder what would happen if we talked to all the parents who try to get on the waitlist and then say, I can't do that. Um, or the parents who are participating and say, these are the accommodations I've needed to make in order to have this work. And so I think that like acknowledging that what's great about what's happening while also sort of looking to how can we potentially, um, so, yeah.
I think Jessica, it's important to, and I'm sorry, I feel like we're taking, I, I, this is kind of fun to have this. This is really fun to have this conversation. I just have to tell you guys. I know some of you guys are like, oh my gosh, let us go home. But I can talk a long time about this.
It's only Tim.
Sorry, sorry, Tim.
Guilty as charged.
I think we, we struggle with that too and what's the best model and how do we provide the best uh, the, the maximum amount of supports we can for kids and meet their needs. And we, Elizabeth now attends it, but I attended PTAN for a number of years. And, and that's a struggle across the region. It's a, that's a regional group and you have conversations about how to meet the needs uh, to help prepare for this. And my curiosity, wondering if things have changed around the Upper Valley in the last year, uh, which you never know because everyone's always trying to, every district tries to better their preschool program, every single district. We called uh, Mascoma because that's a similar district to see if they've like figured out the magic way to have a preschool program that meets everyone's needs. It's not that different. They have different days. Uh, they do it differently. I called, we called Clermont because there had been talk that they were going to be going to this like full day preschool program. And uh, I talked to her for a long time and she was like, well, it didn't really work that way. So they're back to four days and for the reasons that they had to. So it's like, I think the state overall until, you know, the DOE decides to make some changes or fund it differently, it's, we, every district around here does the best they can. Um, Hanover still doesn't have an early childhood program. They use community-based preschool programs, so they, they travel everywhere. So those are the three we looked at and I, the one that is the magic one to me is in Hartford. Hartford, um, but they have funding. So they have a different state funding. So that looks a little different. So I think we can't compare ourselves to Hartford because we're not in Hartford. We're in New Hampshire. That's in Vermont. So that, but yes, it is a real struggle and do I wish that we had five days a week, five hours a day? Oh my gosh, but we need a lot more space and a lot more teachers. Yes.
Well, I'll let Mary, she had her hand up first.
Well, in nineteen eighty, when I was hired to come and teach here, there was a program called Follow Through and that's the program I was in. And it was government, partially funded by government and partially funded by the district. And it was my job as a second grade teacher, but they had the preschool program in our building at Sacred Heart. So it's been here for a long time. The hours haven't changed at all and neither has probably the amount of kids.
Hours, the hours did change because when I came, it was three days a week for the three-year-olds and four days a week for the four-year-olds. And then we pushed back and had it like four, now it's four days a week, but a little bit shorter and then four days a week for the four-year-olds.
So there definitely always has been the need.
Yeah.
And my thought is that, I mean, I, I have to say, I was a little leery of the whole reason why they were building, the city was building this building. But once I saw what it looked like and what they want to happen to it. The other thing he didn't mention was a bill in the legislature to um, ease the tax rate on preschool groups. Uh, so that was, and it didn't pass, so they got it back home again to work on it some more. But he said that would also help other people that have daycares in the area. So. The other thing I wondered is, we were talking a while back about putting all the preschool K one and two in one building. And then three, four, three and four or two, three, four in the other building. And would that help up space to give preschool a little more room?
Oh, it was K, it was K through two, right? Wasn't it K through two at Mount?
Right.
Pre-K through, oh, was it pre-K through one?
No, it was to up to two.
I thought it was pre-K through two and then third and fourth we're going to go. I, I remember that conversation. I don't, I, we would have to really look at our numbers. That might have to be in the summer.
But would that help give you more space?
I can't, I don't have time.
That's the other question, would it give you more space?
You'd have to evaluate that.
And it would also ease.
We'd have to look at that.
The movement of kids in and out of the program.
Right, yeah. So MJ and then Wendy.
So I guess when it comes to, I mean, one of the barriers I hear is the hours of your preschool or your early childhood education at two hours or so and change. But at some point, isn't that what is beneficial to the child of actual early childhood indication, uh, education? And then you actually do have to kind of morph into more of a daycare-like atmosphere to give them a break. So if we were to be able to extend the hours, we would really be going into a hybrid model of, of early childhood education for two hours and then daycare for five.
My care, my kids went to a preschool program that was three days a week, two, three hours a day. So it was, that was what we just did. So yes, I think when you add more hours, you're looking at, are you providing an early, a preschool or early childhood program or are you providing childcare? Um, for, so, uh, yeah, it, that, that's a good point. Yeah.
And, and we've talked about that before and I think a big thing, especially like the three-year-olds is there's nap time. Um, so if you really boil down what we're doing, we are really solid for two hours. They are enriched. They are really working really hard. Um, they go home, I assume they have food because it's around mealtime. By then they're hungry and then perhaps they're resting for a while. And then after that, yes, there would be a few more hours. But that work, that those two hours um, are pretty, pretty intense and, and there's a lot going on. There's movement. Um, we are lucky enough to include our essential arts into their curriculum. So um, for a few weeks they have art, for a few weeks they have PE. And then the, the rest of their day is their own developmentally more appropriate for a three-year-old. Like not more appropriate, but calmer. Um, and, and I totally hear the need for more um, support for hours. I don't feel like our team is asking for more hours. Space is certainly something. And then of course, um, going back to the tuition for the children that, um, that, that is a huge barrier because we have children that come into kindergarten who have not gone to preschool anywhere. Um, often because they can't afford it and those are the ones that are affecting us in kindergarten and beyond a lot. And those affect the other children in their grades too, because there's a lot of attention and need. So um, if we could get more kids in for even those two hours, I think that would be huge and a benefit.
Can't go over the fifty-fifty?
No, but if we had, if children were applying into our lottery because they thought they still could, we might be able to take them or we have the at-risk positions.
So those need blind is what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah.
So if you could get the kids, no matter if they could pay, the ones with the greatest need would have access and then you would. So that would be a budgetary situation.
Yeah. There's just, it's something to consider. Um, and Tim knows money, so.
Well, I, I mean, maybe I'm the lone voice in, on the other side a little bit, but I'd like to, like you to consider. I mean, I remember talking to Tim Coombry, the previous special ed director about when we charge tuition, which is very small. I mean, you're talking like seventy-five dollars a month.
Compared to community-based preschool.
And so I'm wondering from an equity standpoint, so if you have a regular, a typical peer, not, we're not talking, remember, no special ed identified child is ever charged.
Yeah, no.
So if you have a typical peer and you win the lottery, you get free daycare for a couple of hours. And if you lose that lottery, you're paying hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. And it just seems a little bit inequity that you may pay nothing just because your name was pulled out of a hat. So that's the one thing that I'm concerned about.
I never actually took that view.
What's that?
I never took that view, but that's a good one to think about.
That's, so, and I, I'm not saying that was all that went into.
I never processed it.
That's not all that went into this. I mean, you know, obviously it was, Tim was his baby, not mine. But when we talked about like what should the fee structure want to be like, we, we knew it should be small and we knew it should be sliding. But we didn't know that, we didn't think at the time at least, we didn't think that no charge was quite fair for those who are a typical peer.
I know, I think when we, I advocated to have no charge to the early childhood program. I remember that conversation with Tim. He had, he had a different response to me. What?
Okay, oh, sorry, Wendy had one more question.
So Jessica was asking about or, or articulating sort of concerns from um, a typical peer group and sort of what happened, you know, the juggling and stuff like that. What do we know about our kiddos who are, who are identified? Like what happens to them when they go home? Are they typically going home or are they going in back to a preschool program?
Well, if, so some of our preschool students that are identified, we bus from a childcare center to our program. And then we, if they're in childcare, and then we bus them back to childcare. Uh, that is a lot more transitions, but that is something we work on with families. And we bus to any preschool program, I mean daycare center in the city of Lebanon, uh, not outside of the city of Lebanon. Um, and then some of them go home if that's what their family structure is. And then, I mean, none of them go to another preschool program or early childhood program.
So three-year-olds are getting on a bus and going to.
Three-year-olds get on five-point harnesses. We buckle them in and the parents have to buckle them off.
And on the alone or is there a caretaker in the bus?
There's just a bus driver. They're very nice bus drivers.
Last year we did, uh, due to some needs, we did put a, um, a, a para on the bus. I, we needed to do that to help keep some kids safe and keep them buckled. Um, but typically we don't have it written in, uh, written in an IEP.
Just to add, Wendy, I think your question was about special ed, um, special, children with special needs, where they go after they leave our program. And um, yes, some of them do just go home and, and go back to what they would be doing on a Saturday or Sunday perhaps. But what the difference is that our team establishes relationships with all of these families. So there's ideas, there's newsletters that our teachers create and send home with like, you could do this craft, you can make this. This is a song we're singing. So there's more family engagement. Um, and something that was really transformative and incredible was during COVID, we still had to provide services for preschoolers remotely in, in March of twenty twenty through June. And um, it was a challenge and I don't think our teachers ever anticipated needing to do that. Speech therapy via uh, remote with three-year-olds is very interesting too. Um, but what I, I can say is there was one child in particular that grew so much, not because, not because of the work that our teachers did, but because of what the mom learned and what she brought. And she would send photos of things that they had done and they had not been doing these activities prior to joining our preschool at all and definitely prior to that, but they continued after that. And it was really because of the relationship that that mother and father had had created with the classroom teacher. And I, I really, like, yeah, it was, I wish we could take a snapshot of who he was when I first met him, when I screened him in his home right, um, when he was three years old and who he became when he went to kindergarten. Um, because it was incredible. And that's, that's the thing is preschool works. It's, it's a thing that will train, change lives. Um, and it's, it's not just going to change the lives of those children, it's going to change the lives of those parents and their siblings and so on and so forth. And that's why it's worth paying attention to. And we're really grateful again that you are asking these questions. They're great. They're really good.
I was going to say, and that's a good place to stop.
I just have one more.
Jessica has one more thing, she says, just one. So Jessica's going to get the last word.
I'm going to give everybody a candy bar after this.
Go ahead.
Should have brought the candy bars earlier. We could do low blood sugar. Um, so uh, just a couple of points I want to make as we, because I think to me, a crisis is an opportunity. And I feel like we're, we're in a crisis of sort of childhood, childcare, early childhood education, sort of special needs kids getting turfed out of um, private programs and needing, like we have real issues in the, in the Upper Valley. Um, there is a real crisis in this area and I think that's an opportunity. And we're also, um, we had this, you know, great presentation from Sean about the Early Childhood Education Center, which is being built. Um, I think there's, you know, there's a lot of road in between now and when that building goes up. And there's a lot of road in between now and when that programming is, you know, in place and established. And I, from I, I, from what I have seen, you guys do an amazing job. And I would just really encourage the school district to think very hard about collaboration with the city on this exciting project. And we have people who know what they're doing, who understand a lot of the needs and the nuance of the needs. And I think that we're in a new period. The city is doing things it's never done before. The school can do things, school board can do things that it hasn't done in the past. We talk about the cost of these programs and how expensive it is to do private programs. Please give parents the opportunity to give money to these people for, to pay for the program. And if it's the correct number of hours, if it's the correct setup, some version of that, we'll give you all the money. Like as, as a parent, as a parent, I.
We'll just stop the meeting now.
I, I just, I want to, I just, I think that it's incumbent on, I think it's incumbent on all of us to think more creatively than we have thought in the past. And I think that we have more solutions in front of us than perhaps we're aware of. And there's a greater willingness on the part of different parties to participate in a really great solution. And I feel like the ingredients are here for Lebanon to be a really amazing place for early childhood education. This isn't going to benefit my kids. Like I want to be clear about that. I'm going to be way past this. But it's an incredibly important thing. It affects kids going into kindergarten and later. And I, I just would really hate it if the school board lost that opportunity.
And I think the state is looking at maybe changing some things. And as soon as the state, you know, changes some funding or maybe provides some funding, believe me, we will be jumping on it quite quickly.
And I think, I think going back to what we've mentioned several times, I think, yes, the superintendent is involved in this um, initiative. But I think she's involved as a private citizen necessarily as a superintendent. And so I think we need to forge more relationships going forward.
Okay, we'll call Sean.
Right. So not just you, but I think the district as a whole, right? So we need to, we need to take advantage of that. Since he's offered and we know that we want to, I think that's a perfect way to get that started. And as Jessica points out, which is a really good point, this is not decided. It is not finished. This is in the very beginning stages. And even if they have chosen a provider, that does not mean. yes, the superintendent is involved in this, um, initiative, but I think she's involved as a private citizen necessarily as a superintendent, and so I think we need to forge more relationships going forward.
Okay, we'll call Sean.
Right, so not just you, but I think the district as a whole, right? So we need to, we need to take advantage of that. Since he's offered and we know that we want to, I think that's a perfect way to get that started. And as Jessica points out, which is a really good point, this is not decided, it is not finished. This is in the very beginning stages. And even if they have chosen a provider, that does not mean that we still have coordination that cannot occur. So I think that's what we appreciate your willingness to do that for them, and your willingness to talk to all of us and answer all of our many questions, we appreciate it. Um, we also, thank you. You're all good. We also have, we also have Karen, and are you guys here to talk to us as well about?
Everybody can say her.
Okay, okay, I just didn't know if you had a presentation as well, okay. So Karen's gonna talk to us briefly, she has a handout really quickly that's not in your packet, so I'm gonna pass that. Yeah, you got it.
Oh, it's, it's in your package.
It's, it's been updated, so, yeah, this is the updated. This is the updated one, so go ahead.
Slightly, just slightly updated. Um, and I just wanted to mention in terms of the preschool program and the concept of universal preschool, which is something that I've been involved in.
Are you allowed to say that in New Hampshire?
I don't know.
You can say it, but you can't do anything about it.
But, um, I'm, when we did a lot of advocating for universal preschool in Vermont, committees got together and they worked with their legislators. And I don't know if you have a legislative committee or not, but that may be another direction. You could take that tremendous energy and commitment, is to start, start there as well. Because when you set up preschool programs, there is a tremendous cost. It's very expensive, it should be, if you're gonna do quality work. And there are also a dearth of practitioners, so, um, it takes a lot of planning, but I think you have folks here who know how to do that. But I think advocating at the state level would also be a really good use of your time. Just wanted to recommend that.
Thank you.
Yeah. The handout, um, is, it's, it's a list. It's a list of each school and what folks have to offer in each school in terms of support services, which may or may not be special education services. So I thought I'd speak to, um, the special education piece of it mostly. And then, um, we do have two principals here from two of our schools, if they're still here, that could speak, that could speak to some of the, the things that go on in their building that I don't necessarily have anything directly to do with. And also to special education, because we have administration for special ed in each one of our buildings too, which is a tremendous, tremendous resource. You don't see that very often. So, um, similar, similar profile of services in each school. Everybody has a school psychologist. They do work, um, they, they're a part of the special education team, but they get to branch out a little bit when it's necessary. They do a lot of evaluations for us, and they also see kids who have therapy or counseling in their IEPs. They're the folks that make sure that they get, that get the counseling. There are other services for kids who, who, um, either don't have, have that kind of counseling in their IEPs, and then a more typical child who might have a fleeting issue or things that they need to work on in counseling. So the school psychologist resource is tremendous. The next thing, for example, in Mount Leb is the preschool program, which as Katie was describing, is actually a special education program. It is an approved program through the Department of Education. Originally, there were a lot of hoops for people to jump through in order to get that approval, and we really have to stick to what the requirements are, which is what Katie was describing with the ratio of typical and kids with special needs. And now we have at-risk kids, which again is another really nice way to get to our students before, um, they might end up on an IEP or need, or need that level of services. Related service providers down a little bit further, those are special ed folks, speech language pathologists, occupational therapists, physical therapists. We have SLPs on staff in our two elementary schools, and we have subcontracted SLPs in our middle and high school, because we have not been able to find SLPs to hire for middle and high school, but we're working on it. The folks that have been there for several years since I've been here are really part of the community. You really wouldn't even realize that they were subcontracted. They're very dedicated and very much part of the, the scene. Our OT is also, um, a special education staff, and we have a Coda, which is a certified assistant for occupational therapy. So we have two occupational therapy staff. Our physical therapist is, um, a subcontracted person, but again, she is so involved and so much a part of our team, you wouldn't know that she wasn't an actual employee. We have in each building a coordinator for special education. And we also have, um, special educators, which in, in every single one of our buildings. At the bottom, a BCBA is, um, a behavior analyst, and we also subcontract for that service. A lot of schools have their own, that would be great, it's something maybe we can put on a wishlist at some point. But the people that we work with right now are very, very helpful, and they advise us on, um, several of our programs that we have, we have in our schools. In Hanover Street, um, one of the things that would be different is the intensive needs program. We call it IMP. Right now, there's a certain profile of, of, of student who's in that program. Each student has a one-on-one, um, staff person with them. We have two special educators, and our, um, BCBA consultants are active in, in that program. We also have an intensive needs program at the middle school level. If you have questions about that, I can answer, or we can ask Erin Mills, um, or Colleen to answer questions about our intensive needs program, um, here. We also have, um, um, the same related service providers, SLP, OT, and PT. They're, they're itinerant throughout, throughout the supervisory union. At the high school, we have, again, similar staffing. We have started something called a structured skills program. And, um, it's a resource room model, and it's for students who can partially be in the mainstream during the day, but they also need some modified curriculum in order to, um, learn what they need to learn. And we have just hired a teacher for that program, and that teacher will partner with Teresa Honeywell, who does a community-based program, um, for those students. Traditionally, those students would go to what's called the, uh, the, uh, Regional Resource Program over in Hartford. But they were full up this fall when we started to do applications, and so we decided we'd go in this direction. I just got an email that said they had openings, but we're on our way, and we're gonna do this, this way, this time, and, and see how that goes. Honestly, the difference between the two programs is, um, Vermont kids get diplomas regardless of their level of functioning, as long as they meet their program requirements, and they're in school, and they do, they, they don't even have to reach IEP goals, but they participate in all the programming that they're supposed to, to get. They'll get a diploma in Vermont, and they don't in New Hampshire. They get a certificate of completion. So the kiddos who went to Hartford for that program got diplomas. So that was a particular draw for that program.
Can I ask a quick question about that?
Yes.
Cause I, I know that we can, I know of one individual who went to Lebanon and moved to Hanover because of that certificate versus diploma thing. So is that a New Hampshire thing, or is that what Lebanon's choosing?
I think it's a combination. The requirements that I know about, some of our kids are absolutely, would not be able to meet them. It's possible, I don't know if that was a, was that a Lebanon resident or not?
They were, and they recently moved to Hanover.
Okay, I don't, I don't know the answer to that question, but I'm really, I would really like to look at something called an alternative diploma, so at least the word diploma is on the piece of paper that those students get when they graduate or when they leave the program. They work hard, they're here longer than the typical student, and, and I think that if you have alternative credit accrual, in other words, you trade off meeting them where they are academically, and they do the work, I think that they deserve that. I, I don't think everybody's applying for jobs or colleges in the same places. I don't think it's a competitive thing, and it's very rare that your high school transcript is asked for. So I think, I think that there should be a reward at the end of completing your program. So I might be talking to you later about the alternative diploma anyway. And I'm gonna research some more, I think that's something that I'm very, I'm very interested in. We also have the community program, which is a skill, uh, a skill streaming program. It helps with life skills, getting out in the community, maybe some pre-vocational skills, sometimes even getting a little job or a job shadow to help kids make that transition to adulthood that might be struggling with those, with those things. And if you move down, pretty much everything's the same district-wide. I do student services, but that's more than special ed. It's 504, it's kids with insecure housing. I process homeschooling requests, um, for the superintendent. I supervise our out-of-district case manager, which is a very, um, interesting position, because in Vermont, I mean, in New Hampshire, sorry about that. In New Hampshire, um, kids who are state-placed or come to us through court orders, if they're, if they started out in Lebanon, we follow them all over the state. As opposed to where they land, that becomes their, their local agency of education. We follow them everywhere. So out-of-district doesn't necessarily mean that we placed students out of district, although there are several kids that we do. It's mostly kids who are in state custody in foster care that we follow around the state. So the person who does that is currently tracking probably thirty to thirty-two children throughout New Hampshire. We have a district social worker, she's not special education per se, but we do have a district social worker now. District-wide, we have our resource officer. The schools have contracted with therapists for, um, kids with more typical counseling issues. They don't do the special ed counseling, but they do supports for other students, which has been very successful this year from the feedback that I'm getting. We get involved with something called the Engage New Hampshire Program. That's a relatively new program, it's for at-risk students. We don't have a lot of students involved in that, we're kind of waiting to see how that goes, but I think that we have two, and, um, it's been successful for them. I don't know how much you know about the high set equivalency program, but we're connected with that as a resource. McKinney-Bento is the insecure housing I was just speaking about. We have an incredible summer program for kids that are recommended by their teachers and other staff. It's three weeks in July. Um, we also have credit recovery here at the high school for kids who need help to get credits in order to maintain progress in high school. We have a wellness program, uh, that would be, um, under Diane Estes. She's, she's, um, covering that. And then below that are all the kinds of special education services that we offer, depending on what student needs are, what their IEPs are. That's like the fast version of everything.
I have a quick, sorry.
Tia and, Tia and then Wendy.
We made eye contact. So, um, do the homeschool families, they have access to these services and evaluations?
Not necessarily. All students have access to evaluations, that's a guarantee in terms of our residents, even if you're homeschooled. In order to homeschool your child, you have to literally withdraw them from school here, from enrollment. So they're no longer students in any of our schools. Sometimes, um, well, they, they can have access to a class, or to sports, or to things like that. And as far as special ed services go, if we have something that might help them, and they can get their student here on our schedule, we're happy to try to make those arrangements. But we don't go to the home, we don't pay for services, we just make arrangements if it works.
Okay.
Yep.
So some of these services are billable services. So how much do we, like, so what services, um, do we collect?
Are you talking about Medicaid reimbursement?
Yeah.
Okay, it's, it's not like a fee-
I think so.
Yeah, I think so. Well, we have a, we have a couple streams of funding and reimbursement. There's something called 402, that's for the kids who are in state custody. And we spend a certain amount on them, and then the state takes over and pays the balance. We have students that we call state aid kids, it's not what it sounds like. Those are for kids who have extraordinary expenses. Again, when we hit a certain amount, there's a reimbursement that comes back proportionately from the, from the state. As far as Medicaid reimbursement goes, that's a voluntary thing that, that schools decide to do. You have to have certain kinds of staff in order to be able to have sign-offs in order to get reimbursement. It's not a fee-for-service, um, system. It's more like, um, a levels or a point system that gets submitted to the state, and they give us a proportion of what they get in federal Medicaid for education dollars. Only three people, only three positions are able to sign off on the work that we do, and I'll tell you what that is in a second, but an SLP, um, can sign off, and a school psychologist can sign off, a physical therapist can sign off on their work. We have to pay a fee to the state to get, um, sign-offs on our OT work. And only certain services are eligible in New Hampshire. Every state interprets it a little bit differently. And in New Hampshire, um, we can get sign-offs on behavioral kinds of things and psychological services, um, and OT and PT and speech.
So along with that, so the funding comes from Medicaid, but is it for any student, or only students that are identified?
It's only for special ed students?
No, but it's only students that are identified as Medicaid eligible? Or would you be getting it for students that, from the Medicaid fund, but their parents have Blue Cross Blue Shield insurance?
No, it's only special education Medicaid-identified students.
And for those students, they determine what adequate education costs are, right?
I'm sorry. No, no, go ahead.
No, I, I said, and for those students, the state, um, determines what an adequate education, the cost of an adequate education for those students, right?
Which they, they don't do that for anybody.
I'm so funny.
So, I got the joke, that's funny.
We can go in the weeds if you want.
We get thirty-eight hundred, roughly thirty-eight hundred dollars for every child enrolled. And then there are adders, we get, and I don't have another numbers off the top of my head, but you get additional funding for anyone who's free and reduced eligible. That's why it's so important for people to fill out forms out. You get, uh, she mentioned a special ed aid, that's a, that's a separate pot of money, so, uh, so I probably should finish. So you get, and the regular funding for regular ed kids, you get thirty-eight hundred dollars a kid, and then you get money for free and reduced eligible, you get money for special ed identified, and you get money for kids who can't read at a third grade level, which, uh, the cynic says, there's, you're motivated to not make your kids read, cause you get more money.
But, uh, that's obviously not the point, but that's, seems how it plays out.
So that, so that adequacy aid, along with your state, your locally raised state property tax, is about six million dollars to Lebanon. And then there's a special ed, in, in my revenue report, there's a special ed aid, they used to call it catastrophic aid, it's called special ed aid, that looks backwards to some of the costs she's talking about, looks back a year. And then, so the money we're getting paid this year is based on-
Last year's expenses.
A crazy formula on last year's stuff, so.
We also have, um, and I won't go too far into the weeds, but we have a federal grant for special education. We have, um, an English language learner grant that I manage. I have a McKinney-Bento or, um, homeless grant that I manage. And, um, it's usually two to three years at a time, because you have what I call carryover from prior years, and you have up to twenty-eight months to spend each grant. And so there's an element of rollover, and so, um, you kind of have to predict ahead, and then you have to juggle things in order to make sure you use up everything, um, in a timely fashion. So some of these services are paid for through our federal grant, and some of our staff are paid for through our federal grant.
So Tim, when we look at a budget then, so when we're looking at our budget, we look at special ed as a sort of a tab, right? But do we ever look at the offsetting costs specifically, do you know, or the, the income?
Right. I, I won't be offended that one of the tabs in your binder book is always revenue, but it's- Yes, you, there, there's a special ed revenue line on there, all the different, like, general fund revenue lines that we have are there in the tab. Now there, what we don't discuss, because there's no impact on the taxpayer, but we can if you want, but it's gonna be a huge budget meeting. We don't discuss the other fund that is a special revenue fund, which is where, when she talks about IDEA. So when I give you the salaries for special ed teachers in the budget, it's all the teachers that are paid out of the general fund. On my spreadsheet, I carry a teacher who might be paid out of IDEA, but I subtract it out. So the number that you see in the general fund isn't showing that teacher who's paid out of IDEA money, because that money is actually in that special revenue fund. And then we, when you vote on a budget, that's, that's a bigger number than our general fund. It's the general fund plus the special revenue funds, which are all the grants, plus food service. So, uh, when she talks about the, the IDEA, that's one of those special revenue funds, along with title money, title one, title two, title three. It's actually placed very well into the boring document that's in the packet.
All right, do we have any other?
Well, I'm gonna look closer at that, see where I do the budget.
Look at this.
I'm, I'm just curious how, how well we offset, or like, what, what portion of special ed services then sort of flows through to the taxpayer?
One of the things you have to be careful about is something called, um, oh gosh, it just, help me, Tim. You can't take the place, supplanting. You, uh, you have to be really careful about the supplanting rules. And so essentially, when a new director comes into place, you've inherited a prior way of doing things, and you can't like start switching things around, because then it could be perceived as supplanting. In other words, we have to spend our local money before we spend the federal money. And any federal money we spend is to be viewed as something that we may not be able to do if we didn't, if we didn't have the federal grant. So there are a lot of rules that you don't want me to-
Many, some of them were in this document that we had in our packet, they talked about those rules too, so.
But I'm happy to explain it, if anybody wants to know.
All right, but we're gonna stop.
I'm happy to stop.
Unless there's a dying explanation that you need from Karen. Otherwise, we're gonna have other means with Karen, so we can get the rest of the explanation.
Does anybody have any more questions for Karen? No. Any other questions for our administrators? No. We thank you all for coming and waiting all this time. We appreciate it. Thank you for your contributions. You're dismissed. Yes. Thank you for all of your work in this area, all of you. Okay. Yeah, yeah, Sean. All right, so it is. We've almost been going for two hours. I know that Tim is eager to jump onto his section. However, chair is prerogative. I'm giving us a five-minute break. This is going to happen every meeting from now on. Just so you know, we're going to have a break, because there are, the majority of us are women. We're going to have a break. So we, this is, it's not for you, but you can take it. All right, so we'll be back in five minutes. Eight twenty-five. Okay, we're going to go ahead and get started again. I get to use the thing. All right, so we will return back to the agenda as written. So now we're on to item number eight, the SAU leadership team update. And that's Tim's doing a business administrator update.
So before I get into documents in the packet, I just want to mention that one of the documents in the packet was the audit letter. I mentioned the findings last board meeting, so that letter is deep in there. Towards the end, you'll see, I think it's called findings. And those are the two things I talked about. We need a assistant district treasurer, and I actually forget the other one right now. But that's the letter to the board that comes up from the auditor every year. I also gave you the actual audit report. You can feel that free to peruse that at your leisure. We get audited at the end of every fiscal year, starts in September, and it's usually around March before it's done.
Tim, can I ask you a question about the letter?
Correct.
Is there, do we, I don't, maybe we have done this. I just don't remember it. Discuss and reaffirm our investment policy?
So we have an investment policy, and you'll see that's one of the findings, is that I have neglected to make sure it's in front of the policy committee every, has to go there every year. There's usually every changes, and they just slip in line, so this will help you, help me, help you to get that approved every year.
Can I ask, so the significant risks identify, and then there's three things? Is that just like a general statement, or is that things that they actually found at the top of page two?
No, that's-
That's general.
General.
Yeah, it says these are identified universally in New Hampshire in almost every audit.
The part that's specific to us is under key audit matters on page three. You'll see deputy other audit matters, findings or issues. That's just a general bullet point. The last sentence there says, "None of the matters discussed resulted in a condition to our retention as eleven school officials auditors." Deputy Treasurer, repeat comment, and investment policy. Those are the two findings that we're going to talk about finding. And you won't find those written anywhere in the audit report. It took me years to figure out that they don't put those things in the audit report. So what we did wrong is only on this document.
So I have one question relative to those things and to the New Hampshire general assurances, the next thing you're going to talk about that I have to sign. So on page six of that-
Of the general assurances?
Of the general assurances.
Yes.
They're related, I promise. On page six C, it says, "The sub-restaurant, which is the school board and the superintendent, these are who we're talking about, "should take prompt action when instances of noncompliance are identified, including noncompliance identified in audit findings." So the noncompliance identified in our audit finding letter are these deputy treasurer and the investment policy thing. So taking prompt action on that, we're going to get the investment policy in front of the school board annually, which is, we can do that. But this deputy treasurer thing, how can we, I have to aver that we're taking prompt action on these things, but how do we take prompt action on the lack of a deputy treasurer?
Well, I think I feel confident that if I can show evidence that we're trying to get a deputy treasurer, that's the only action I can do. I can't make somebody be a deputy treasurer. So, you know, when we get audited again in a couple of months, and they say, "What about a deputy treasurer?" Either we'll have one, or I can at least show that we've talked about it. I've been given some people who might be interested, and I'm doing all I can, you know?
Okay. I feel all right about that. I just want to make sure we-
So I think Bob is interested, but he was in tax season, so maybe now I'd want to send him another email just to see.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead.
So that's the audit. I guess it didn't get in the agenda, but I did put in, before we get to the big letters thing, which shouldn't take long actually, but I did put an expenditure report and a revenue report in there for monthly. I don't usually throw the revenue in there until this time of year. On the expenditure report, things are going pretty well. The only thing I wanted to highlight on there is right now I'm showing an encumbrance to transfer to food service to seventy-five thousand dollars. I just got a report that showed us down to sixty-nine, but what I'm trying to express there is that our food service fund is taking, this year, taking in less revenue than we're spending. But even that's in flux, because we finished last year with a hundred thousand dollar in the black. That's good. We committed, the board committed to spending up to a hundred thousand dollars on new kitchen equipment for Mount Leb. And so far, I haven't seen bills anywhere near that, so we may not have to transfer seventy-five thousand dollars or so to the food service fund. I'm not going to know until the Mount Leb project is done and we're done serving meals. Seventy-five thousand dollars reflected through March. I just got, I guess that was through February, because I just got Marches and we're minus sixty-nine thousand. So it got a little better is my point.
Is that because we're not charging quite enough for our meals?
Well-
Food costs have gone up, so I'm assuming that-
We are limited in what we can charge. So the biggest thing why we were plus last year is that we had universal free meals, and the federal government was being actually pretty aggressive in what they were reimbursing. So now we're not universal free meals, and so we are selling less meals. We don't have a lot of bad debt. Some districts have tens of thousands of dollars of people not paying their food. We're about four thousand. That's a typical year for us. So it's a matter of not being universal free meals or not selling as many meals. But we cannot, because there's a lot of rules, like the things we're going to talk about next, we cannot charge whatever we want. We're actually limited in what we can charge for a full-price meal in proportion to what the free meal reimbursement is. So we're, we could go up, we were authorized, I think, to go up a quarter last, in the year we're in now, and we went up, I think, fifteen cents. So we, you know, that decision, the maximum you can go up is told to you, and you're allowed to go up a little less if it makes it easier. I made the decision in talking to Shay to go up a little less, because it was the first time we charged in two years. And I knew that we, we weren't going to make up that sixty-nine thousand dollars by charging a full amount. We were probably just going to get a lot of people angry that, A, we're charging, and we're twenty-five cents more. You should know that we're going again, going up again next year to keep pace with the learning, the, it's called PLE. It's a tool that tells you how much you're allowed to charge.
So we're losing money because our contract for food services is higher than, like, that's based on the number of meals we sell? Or anticipated that we would sell?
Well, we pay our, as far as the actual fee that our contractor gets, they get, I guess, thirty-five grand a year. The rest of the cost of the food service program, which is seven hundred thousand, it's food-based and labor-based. So we are paying, they had to raise what they're paying their food service staff to get help in the door, and we're paying more in food. And those two costs are not completely offset by the money we're bringing in between, obviously, we still have the federal funding for all of our free and reduced, and we have some adult lunches, and we have people paying full meals. So it's going to continue to be negative, because we have to hire people from Mount Leb next year, to be honest with you, so.
Are free and reduced applications back up to pre-COVID levels in terms of percentages?
I'll have to ask Shay that. They went up, but I don't know if we're back to where they were. So, I mean, food services, we were black for a lot of years. I'd like to get back into black, just because, you know, you can't pay a food service person ten dollars an hour. They're paying at least fifteen to seventeen dollars an hour, and that's just a matter of fact. So I think we're going to have to just be okay with swallowing a pill until we can catch up with what we can charge for a meal. What we can charge and what we probably should charge. Like, you can't just go to ten dollars a meal from three.
We did have that conversation in SWAC about doing a campaign, like a marketing campaign, around filling out those forms for free and reduced lunch. It would be really helpful for me to know before our next meeting whether or not our numbers are back up to where they should be, or whether or not we need to do some sort of a campaign to incentivize that application process, because that was on our radar, but-
I'll find out. Maybe I'll send you an email. Expenditures, you know, POs are theoretically closed, but you're going to see that number come down. So if I ran the numbers today, we would have a fund balance that's pretty significant, probably about one point seven to two. But we're spending, we're still spending. I'm like, I don't understand how you guys did all your POs and yet you're still doing POs.
We found out whether we can use any of that for the track?
Well, I'm going to, I told this to Joanne. I guess I'll let the cat out of the bag. I'm going to propose as part of the year-end projects that we reserve, we just don't take as much money out of the cap reserve fund for the track as we wanted. I just need to double-check the language that's set up too, and I haven't done that yet, but I do have that on my radar. It's actually, if you saw my list that we're maintaining, it's actually one of the things on the list, is that I would like to take, I said, we're going to have to take like nine, we're going to have a public hearing in the next two board meetings for the track, and the number minus the donations is nine hundred and something thousand. I would propose we take six hundred and something thousand, leave three hundred, just coming out of the general fund, if you will.
And did you, did you, the Vanyar?
I got your email. I could not quickly locate the list of who makes up that seventy-nine thousand dollars, so I have it on my to-do list. But that list didn't come from me, so I got to find it from-
Right, but I wasn't, I wasn't misremembering that the Vanyar family definitely donated, I don't think it was very much.
Well, there was some money in, maybe, that's what I need to double-check, I guess, because we did have a track donation line in memoriam of Coach Stone. It had like sixty-nine hundred bucks in it. And if that's the money you're talking about, that is included.
Chris Vanyar's dad passed away. She's now a teacher over at the high school. I think we were receiving, I think in like his obituary, because he was part of state line sports, and then Chris's daughter also, I think that family has just all been a bunch of runners. And so I think that like in his obituary, they did like in time donate, or in memorandum donations. And so we were, I think we were receiving money.
I think we probably put it in that stone line, because we already had a track donation line in our, I remember I told you about the special revenue funds. One of them was a track donation line that we've had for five, six years for any money that came in for that. And if, I can go see what donations went into that line. And that line was included in the seventy-nine thousand dollar amount. But I'll tie that all together in the next week or two before we do the total hearing. I just need-
I just had a thought when I was listening to the celebration yesterday. I was like, where did the Vanyars go?
All right, so on the revenue sheet, and I'll take any questions, but just to try to be quick, I tried to highlight, it's black and white, tried to highlight some of the revenues that are extra. So the fund balance, amount of money that goes back to the taxpayers consists of any money we didn't spend and any extra revenue. Extra revenue by law cannot be spent anywhere. So we have extra revenue in impact fees. We budgeted fifty thousand. We've received two hundred and sixty-one thousand. Going down, you'll see that we have other state aid. I labeled that retirement rebate. So the state last year gave a one-time seven percent of your teacher, of your certified staff retirement contribution back to each district. That was just two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. I did want to highlight that our special ed aid, which is three hundred and seventy thousand dollars budgeted, we received three hundred and ten. I'm not expecting any more, so that's sixty thousand dollars less. So that's, that's the money that we get that's in relation to the special ed spending from the previous year. And that's a formula, and if you wanted to know the formula, I'll have to call the DRA and find it out. Because it's like seventy percent of a hundred percent, but only, it's really not seventy percent. It's whatever the state authorizes, so.
What's our rental income?
If we charge for someone to use a space under KFR, you can see we don't, we haven't done too much of that in the last few years. So probably this next budget cycle, I'm going to propose that to be like zero instead of twenty thousand.
But isn't, and isn't it the next year, like, don't we often get rental income from the political campaigns?
True, we might see that. We just set the twenty-four budget, so, you know, when someone comes and does a rally in the, you know, in the high school, we charge all that. So, and we get it upfront, because some campaigns have stiffed us.
Don't go for that.
Medicaid reimbursement, we talked about that. So you'll see, as of April fifteenth, we have ninety-four thousand dollars received on a budget of two hundred. I did check today, and that's up to a hundred and nine, so it's coming. It's a little better. So a couple of years ago, we lowered that to fifty thousand dollars, because we thought we, because of the rules Karen talked about when Tim was here, we didn't think we were going to get any revenue at all, but they did some jiggering of the states, and now the Medicaid revenue is getting better than it, than we thought it was going to be. So altogether, we are three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars better on revenue than we budgeted. So a million- So um a million dollars is fifty cents on your tax rate. So, you know, what is that? Any else fifteen cents less taxes you'll pay? So every bit, every bit, there are little bit helps.
What's that school board number on that expenditure?
So there are, it's not a lot of money, but the school board has money for elections, for the audit, your salaries, which I know are huge.
Is that also our legal fees though, right? Do our legal, legal fees are included in there?
So basically, SAU plays in the school board and the office of the superintendent. Those are the two big lines that run the district, so.
Yes, and what's the other local revenue line?
Other local revenue. So, oh, that's a good question, because that would be something that doesn't fit anywhere else. But we're really, we're applies, or has applied for the last most of a decade here is, there's this, I'm gonna try to explain this quickly without making the meeting last on. There's a lot, there's a rebate that comes from healthcare, from a whole lawsuit thing that I can s, s, fill you in, but so for last year, for probably the last decade, we've gotten a rebate from school care or health trust. It comes to us for school care as a credit on our bill. So the actual dollar amount we pay out is essentially one month, it's like, we get a month free, basically. But our auditors want us to always capture the full cost because the rebate isn't guaranteed year to year. So we book the rebate revenue to the other local revenue line, and then I bill the expense. So I manually make an adjustment at the end of the year, and I try to reflect it actually in the expense report all year long. I manually build a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar expense to the expenditure side, and it gets offset here in this other local revenue side. I will say that there is essentially no re, there is no premium holiday for the next year at all, for the first time since I've been doing this eleven years. So uh I didn't put a premium holiday in the budget on the revenue side, and you won't see me book it on the expense side. So um, so the other local revenue of that, you know, that four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and you see a year-to-date four oh four, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of it is that accounting exercise with the, with the premium holiday. So you could, no, you see the other, the year-to-date transactions. Those are the real transactions, the real revenue we've brought in that don't fit anywhere else. Lost books maybe, or uh lost my ID, we're charging you ten bucks, all kinds of stuff like that, so. All right. I'm sorry to dominate stuff. These general assurances, really, I think, is open for discussion if you have any questions. The general assurances are, and the, the grant assurances, one is federal and one is state. These are documents we have to, I need to present to the board. Do you have any questions? And the board chair and the superintendent sign. If we wanna take federal money, we have to play by these rules. Is it, in essence, what it says. And we don't go, just so you know, we don't go through a checklist to make sure we follow every one of these rules, but we uh, and we go to grant classes. We know the rules of each individual grant, and we get audited every year, so we are confident that we are following these rules where they apply. Some of them don't apply. There's one, something in there about following the rules of some such-and-such amendment. I actually Googled that, and it has to do with money you get from a Department of Labor grant. So a lot of these rules don't apply. They're just for every federal fund out there. Questions about the letter?
The, the general assurances letter?
Yeah.
Uh, I have, I have questions. Does anybody help? I have a couple of questions. I have to sign it, so I wanted to make sure I knew what I was signing. Um, first question is on page nine, um, under eight B. And we actually talked about this either earlier this year or last year. So under eight B, this is about drug-free workplaces. It says that we're establishing an ongoing drug-free awareness program. And we had talked about this, and I think the answer was no, we don't have an ongoing drug-free awareness program. And since this is one of the things, I thought we probably wanna go back to that. And we talked about the policy, and we tell people what the policy is, which is something else we have to do. We have to inform them of the policy, but.
I think we can probably easily rectify, as far as the dangers of drug abuse, we, we have training programs. We can make them mandatory instead of optional. So an employee can go into Portal and take a one of a thousand courses, and we can make that mandatory. We do have uh an, I think a pretty vibrant EAP, uh Employee Assistance Program, where we provide um resources for drug and alcohol abuse, or it could be domestic violence, whatever. We, we've always had that, but in the last year and a half, with Xavier's help, we've really made that robust and actually advertised it more. So I'm pretty pleased that I can think of half a dozen people that are, that have been given information on it in the last six months, so.
So that's good. I, I think if we just, since it is something specified and we had talked about it, like, let's just make that happen. Um, and I did go through and compare, one of the things the letter recommends is that you go through and compare the general assurances fiscal year twenty twenty-three to the general assurances fiscal year twenty twenty-four, because there are changes line by line. They're not significant changes, so I'm not worried about that.
I'm impressed. You have a lot of endurance.
Did not understand a lot of what I read, but I understood how it worked, so. Um, that was my only question about that.
Thank you. Appreciate the time. Usually I'm briefer, I promise.
Oh wait, sorry. Well, that was my only question about that one. I do have another question about the other thing. The um, the grant program assurances document. So.
State level document.
State level document, right. So the question I have, so there's a bunch of points in here of the programs that we participate in that say that you're supposed to maintain, develop and maintain a written policy on parent and family engagement in these particular areas. Um, and in the, we have, like, there's a part in the end of this where we fill out, like, what is our parent and family engagement program? And it's like, people can go to board meetings and sometimes there's a forum. It feels like not very robust, right? So I just would like us to look at those, because it's in almost every one of these, is that we need to do that. So I'd just like to look at what is our parent and family engagement plan, and can it be perhaps a little more robust?
Can I just ask one question about page numbering? So it goes from one of twenty-nine to twenty of twenty-nine, and then, oh, sorry, twenty-one of twenty-nine, and then twenty-two of twenty-five?
Yes.
So, but that's just the state's mistake, no? We're not actually.
It's the state's mistake, yeah. And pro tip, there's lots of state's mistakes already in this document, so we're gonna just slide on past that. So yeah, so that's, that was my only thing, is I just feel like, because they talk about it so much, let's maybe check out what we do. A little. That's it. Okay. Back to the agenda. Thank you, Tim. Okay, so we're moving on to number nine, which is unfinished business. We have two quick actions of unfinished business. Um, and this is just something that we neglected to do before, so we need a motion to do this, and then we need to actually do it. Um, the first is nine A, discussion and action on dissolving the LHS Track Fundraising Committee. Track, yes, I do.
Uh, move that we dissolve the LHS Track Raising, Track Fundraising Committee.
Okay, motion by Steve, seconded by MJ. We've already funded the track. We had the ceremony, this dedication ceremony yesterday. We just need to dissolve it. All those in favor of dissolving the Track Fundraising Committee unanimous, thank you.
And thanks to everyone who participated.
Yes, and Lisa was on that. Thank you very much for all your help and everyone who participated. All right, and nine B, discussion and action, we need to dissolve the superintendent search committee. We've hired a superintendent.
I move that we dissolve the superintendent search committee, having successfully found a superintendent.
All right, Steve, Steve motion, Lisa seconds. Um, and again, thank you to everyone, all the board members who served on that, and all of the school um community members who support, who served on that, Kevin. Everyone who served on that did a great work and a wonder, and we're very pleased with our choice and pleased for Amy to start in the, in the summer. All right, so all those in favor of dissolving the superintendent search committee unanimous, thank you very much. All right, that brings us to new business. We're skipping down to ten C, because we already did A and B, which is board mentor responsibilities. There is a paper in your packets about that. This is a um, uh, from a board consulting firm. Um, and it's just a list of all the things that a potential mentor could do. We are not necessarily going to do all of these things. We can do other things besides these. We just wanted people to have a, something to start with. Um, and feel free to say yay or nay to things, to add other things, to talk from your experience as a person who is being mentored right now, who has been mentored other times, uh, who never got a board mentor, who had a previous board mentor. Uh, whatever your discussions are, we're going to try and come up with a list of responsibilities that then can be turned into a, either, I think it's probably gonna be a policy, but, or a procedure, I'm not sure which it will be. But it'll be something that we'll have going forward for people to be.
Maybe, I mean, because we have a policy that states that.
We'll have a mentor. So maybe it'll be an R to that policy, or so, who knows? Anyway, so uh thoughts?
I think it should probably go to policy committee, that it was gonna be an R to discuss it, rather than having.
I think we have to first have some.
What does, what, policy needs direction?
Because it's been a long, we established this a long time ago, and there hasn't been any formal process or thoughts around it.
Because I think if it went to policy, then policy would talk about it and come back to us, and then we would agree or disagree. I mean, I think if we, if we all have a thought about it, if we don't have any preferences, then it can, it can go right back to policy and they can come up with it. But I think at this point, because it's new and because we haven't fleshed it out before, it would be helpful to flesh it out. So.
Are, you're talking about the, the mentor.
Yeah, mm-hmm. So each one of those bullets is a potential responsibility. We can add, we can just subtract, we can delete, we can come up with new ones.
And add it to a, an actual policy?
Well, we haven't decided that yet. We're, this is just our first discussion, yes.
I guess I just, I, I wonder what the argument for formalization of the mentor program is.
I think that the superintendent had concerns about it.
Yes.
Even though she initially helped establish it, so I don't.
This doesn't, I, speaking for myself, I, I don't, this, this looks like a great list of things.
Right, it is a listing.
It doesn't, it, but it also sort of feels like making a list of all the things a friend should do to you, and then making a policy about it feels like a little bit. Yeah, I, I quest, I wonder about the, I don't know, there may have been instances where a policy is appropriate, so I don't wanna, but it's unclear to me why we would.
I think, I, I think the, the question that maybe we should answer is, do we find value, as a board, do we find value in having a mentor to new board members?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I would say yes.
Stephen?
I would argue that, uh, I think this is what you're suggesting, that the policy is, the board policy is that we have a mentorship program. How individual new board members and mentors choose to execute that depends on the mentor and the mentee and their relationship and what they mutually feel each other needs.
Yeah.
So I think formalizing that aspect in a policy probably makes it too structured and onerous to be able to implement. So the policy is we have a mentorship program, and then we leave it to individuals, and this could be a document that floats around as some suggestions, but not as a formal policy.
Go ahead, MJ.
So I agree with Stephen, and I think that probably the initial concern, which was unique to, to this particular board, was that one mentor was assigned to three new people, which then starts to raise the question of if four board members are meeting at once in a mentor relationship, is that starting to have a quorum? So perhaps the policy just needs to maybe spell out what happens if more than one or two board members needs a mentor on a given election cycle. Otherwise, I agree, I mean, Mary was my mentor, and we kept it very informal, and when I needed to ask Mary a question, I did, and I, I got what I needed out of her. I don't think that needs to go to a formal policy. But I do see the concern that one person is a mentor to three new members, because.
Yeah, so it didn't happen.
Two people, I mean, at a time.
It, it seems, to be honest, it just feels like overkill to me, because I'm like, if there's a rule that you can't have four board members meeting together, that would apply whether, you know, Wendy is our mentor.
That's not actually the rule, it's five.
So I, I guess, it, it just seems like if, if a rule is already covered by another rule, why would you make a new rule about it? I think clarifying that, you know, stating like, we're gonna have one mentor. If there, they, if that mentor had four mentees, hey, guys, don't all meet together, because then that's a quorum, feels like a useful reminder. But I don't know why we would have a pol, there is a policy about that, so it just.
Yeah, I agree. So I, I do not feel that there needs to be a policy. So I'm bringing this because I've been directed to by the superintendent. So she wants clarity on what we want as a board, which it seems like what we want as a board is not a policy. We want this relationship to be organic, and we want to specify to whomever it is that there is the problem, a potential problem of quorum, so just be careful about that, which I think is easy enough to tell people. Um, I think MJ's point, we could specify that there would be always multiple, I mean, and that's another way to go, is to have one mentor per new person, so that you spread out the mentoring, but we don't have to do that. That's just a.
I think it gets a little messy in that, like, if you have two, I mean, I, I think it can go either way. I mean, I think if any of the new board members would rather mentor with somebody else, they can certainly let you know, and they can choose somebody else. Um, I think um just for like clean channels of communication, if, if like I'm working with you to work with them, then, do you know, like, I think if we get too many people involved in the mentor program or process, then.
So I just wanna understand, this is a new thing. This is a policy that we used to have, but we didn't act it out because I never had a.
It appears that maybe you were ax, missed that year by the board chair, because there definitely was mentoring, I know, the year I was brought on, so. But you, then again, that was also a year of three new people again.
You guys got a mentor. I didn't get a mentor.
Right, and, and I don't know if last year there were either. So I don't think last year they were assigned, and the, and our previous year they were not assigned.
Okay.
So, so.
Just wanted to understand that part, so it is a policy?
It is a policy, it's already stated.
Didn't have it.
But we didn't have it.
And they were just gonna move on to the.
Yes. Right.
Join us.
Well, and the reason, and the reason, for me, the reason why we're reinstating the, the policy, or re, you know, revisiting the policy and, and implementing the policy is because I do think it's a really valuable thing, right? So this is why, this is why I wanted to do this, is to say, hey, I think it's good to do, and I think it's valuable.
I understand, but I don't think that, I.
Yes, I.
I think her.
I agree, that's fine. That's, that's the will of the board, that's the will of the board.
Don't break rules.
Right. Don't create rules, you need to.
I feel oriented.
There's already rules.
All right, don't.
Good, easy peasy. See, super fast discussion, okay. Uh, that brings us to our next, yes. Go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to enter non-public under New Hampshire RSA ninety-one A three-two C.
Okay, so for new people, when we have um a non-public, what? Yeah, sorry, I'm just gonna explain it. Thank you. MJ's made a motion, Steve's gonna second it. We're gonna vote on it in two seconds. When we have a non-public, then we go into another room off the, um, over here, and we're there for a short amount of time. We discuss something that can't be discussed in a public session, and then we'll come back. Um, in order to do non-public, we have to have a roll call vote, correct? Is that right? So when we do a non-public, we have to have a roll call, so I'll ask you each individually if you agree to go into non-public. So Lisa, do you agree to go into non-public? Okay, Mary?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Kevin?
Yes.
Tia?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes, Anne, do we need to state the reason that we're going, is it?
She just did, not, not, she, so go ahead.
I just did, so it was under um number C as matters which, if discussed in public, would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the board. So that's at the bottom of your agenda is always the reason to go into non-public and the different choices.
We don't have to give any explanation for.
No, that's why you can't.
It's confidential, yeah.
On the minutes, it will say, like, we discussed a personnel matter, or.
We, I've been on boards where we got into trouble on this, so I'm just making sure that we're.
We're usually pretty good about this.
Doing what we're supposed to do. Great, yeah.
This is the thing we're supposed to do. All right, so we'll be back. This is the thing we're supposed to do, all right, so we'll be back.
Do we need to make a motion to go back into regular session or no? Yes? Okay, and I need to see roll call. All right, so first, can I have a motion to go back into regular session?
Yes.
Lisa, thank you. Can I get a second? Mary, second. Okay, Lisa moved second. Okay, roll call. Lisa.
Lisa.
Yes. Mary, Steve, Wendy.
Yes.
Yes. Kevin, I keep saying your name.
Yes.
Tia, Jessica, great. Okay, unanimous. Sorry. All right, and then Steve, yes.
I'd like to move that we extend our regular board meeting by additional 15 minutes.
Okay, because we're at our three-hour mark. Thank you. Can I get a second? Second by Wendy. Moved by Steve, second by Wendy. All those in favor? Okay, I know. All those reluctantly in favor. All right. 15 minutes, yes. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so we are back onto our agenda. We are doing a first reading of various policies. Does anybody, when we do a first reading typically, we do not have a whole bunch to say about these things. Generally, I have a lot of grammatical corrections, which I then pass on to the superintendent. I have that. Does anybody have any questions about the policies? We'll go through them. We'll do them. Go ahead.
The question, Tia took really good notes at our policy meeting.
Thank you.
And they're in draft four, but she can also, like between this meeting and our next one, she can share those notes out so people can sort of
Yes.
see what the policy committee's discussion was around these.
That's a good idea. Let's do that.
Okay. Yeah, email it to just everybody.
No.
Email it to Lil.
Email it to me.
That's what I clarified.
So I'll email it to me, and what I'm going to do is ask for Lori to post it under the policy mini.
Are they meeting minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Do those need to be approved by?
So draft, as long as they say, as long as they say draft on them. So I'm going to ask Lori to post them as draft.
Okay.
And then I'll direct you all to the link of where that is once they've been posted. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Excellent. Any other questions about these particular policies that you would like to know before we come back? No? No? Great. Okay.
I think the KFR, my only question that remains is, do we, do we really want to rent out the computer lab space?
Yes.
There's a note on the last page, bullet four.
Do you have the KFR? Did you pass that KFR?
I did, yeah.
Okay, okay, good.
Computer lab will only be rented when the activity is supervised in person by the district technology coordinator or designated. So you can rent it out, but not on your own.
Can, can, do we have examples, and I don't need it, but do we have examples of who would rent that out and why they would have access to our computers?
I don't have enough time.
Okay, and let's ask, because I don't know that anybody could do that, because everybody had, in order to get into a computer, you have to have a district login. So I don't know how we would rent it to people who weren't associated with the district already with district logins. So let's ask Pete that question. Yeah? Okay, good question.
Probably need at least a motion en masse.
Yes.
To move these to second.
And I think we can do them as a group.
Yeah.
We used to do that back in the day.
Yeah. So I'll make, I'll make a motion to move policies, KFR, JLCF, GBCD, EEAE, to a second reading.
And IJOC.
IJOC.
Okay. Motion by Wendy, second by Steve. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Unanimous, excellent. All right, H, our discussion in action, we need to accept the donation of $7,000 from the Burn Foundation for the LHS Future Business Leaders of America. Steve.
I move that we accept the donation of $7,000 from the Burn Foundation for the LHS FBLA with our credit.
Thank you. Mary, second. I mean, sorry, MJ, second. I'm losing it, they're ahead. All right, thank you. Okay, moving on to I, we need Oh, we need to vote. All those in favor? Excellent, unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to I, we need to acknowledge the donation from Jack Reader and Mary Jo Turk of $500 for the LHS Science Olympiad dues and fees.
And we don't need to, we don't need to.
And we don't need to act, we just need to
Say thank you.
Thank you for that, thank them for that. So thank you for your generous donation for the LHS Science Olympiad. And also, we'd like to acknowledge the donation from Muscoma Bank of $500 for the LHS Science Olympiad dues and fees. We actually finished first and second in the Science Olympiad in the state, so those fees were well-used. So thank you to those people for donating. Okay, committee updates. We just, Finance and Facilities met Monday, April 3rd. Is there an update? Who's the new chair of that, by the way?
Hi.
Oh, MJ, excellent.
And Steve's the secretary.
I informed Steve of his duties tonight.
Okay.
But Jessica graciously did her duties for you at the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, so we met and we just went over the progress of the LHS and HSS projects, and they have engaged a firm out of Concord, I believe, to measure the ground for seismic activity in response to a concern from a neighbor. And everything else is going well and on plan there with that. And then we had a lengthy discussion about preschool education in the district, and are going to refer back to the board for a full discussion. Part of that was getting educated tonight by our preschool teacher and the city.
Thank you. Next.
We did, we did also have one item for the full board.
Oh, what was that?
We had recommended that the board, we were recommending to the board that they form a task force or working group.
So why don't we enable that, or why don't we take that up at the next, add that to an agenda item, get that to Lil?
So for a, for a, yeah. Okay, so that's an agenda item we will add. Can you just email me the, what it, what the language was that we talked about in FNF?
Oh, I'll get it.
Okay, perfect, someone. Okay, thank you. Policy committee met. Policy committee met on Monday, April 3rd.
And Tia's notes.
And we're about to see all of the notes of that. Did you want to share anything beyond that? No? Okay.
No, but you'll note in her minutes of that, there were two policies that we decided not to move forward, so just highlight those.
Okay. Education committee met Monday, April 17th. Back to Tia. Did you want to share anything about education committee?
Um, there was a curriculum update, discussion about some open funds for, was it ELA? Okay, for ELA, and delving into that while the funds are available and seeing what we can do in terms of updating the curriculum for ELA programs.
And we talked a little bit about the new legislation and how that's affecting high school graduation requirements and also courses to meet those requirements, and, and we're going to get more updates on that.
Right.
Okay. Okay, PNN is to be, to be announced. Student Wellness Advisory Committee, next meeting is Monday, May 3rd at 3:30 at the SAU office. HACTC, their next meeting is Monday, May, sorry, Tuesday, May 9th at 9:00 a.m. Area, their next meeting is Tuesday, May 16th at 6:00 p.m. And the School District Task Force, the next meeting is Thursday, May 5th at 6:00 p.m. Leads us to 12 future agenda items, board member recommendations or questions. So, one future agenda item is going to be coming from FNF about whatever it's about, early childhood education task force. Are there any other future agenda items, board member recommendations or questions? No? Okay, and the next school board meeting will be Monday, May, Wednesday, May 10th at 6:30 p.m.
So, is the superintendent attending both meetings in May?
I understand that she will not be at the first board meeting in May.
So, the, May 20, whatever, is her last one?
Correct.
Okay.
Her next one is...
May 24th. All right. So, our next board meeting here will be Wednesday, May 10th.
And you're running it, that meeting, too?
And Tim will be running that meeting as well.
I'm here.
Okay.
Do we need to revisit public comment?
Yes, so, yes, we need to reopen public comment. We don't have to make a motion for that. We just have to reopen it, because it's, it's already required.
And then you have to close it.
Right. So, we're reopening public comment. There is no one in the room. Is there anyone online?
Over here.
There is no one online. So, then...
In that case, motion to adjourn.
I think we have to make a motion to close public comment.
Oh, do we?
I think it's our...
We didn't open it. We didn't make a motion to open it.
Let's refer to the policy. It changed.
We, it changed. That was our problem. We didn't know what we were supposed to do last time, and I still don't know what we're supposed to do.
Leave the motion, leave that behind. The remainder of the...
Yeah.
The words.
One moment, please.
You just have to close it.
Yeah. All right, so, I will just close public comment, and...
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Steve, seconded by MJ. All right. Thank you.